Good evening, welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for April 3rd, 2019. It's 7:10 PM. This meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. Our first order of business tonight is the preserve at Abbeville and Abbeville Commons. The applicant had asked for a continuation. John?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board. John Smolak, attorney for Abbeville Development and Abbeville Residential. We're requesting a, the board's vote to continue the hearing on this matter, both for the 180-day extension as well as for the hearing to May 22nd in order to enable us to work out some additional details and design layout architectural matters. And we had initially submitted a request for continuance to May 15th, but later understood that the board isn't meeting until the 22nd, so we just clarified that for the record in terms of the request for continuance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right. Could I get a motion to continue the Abbeville Commons and preserve at Abbeville until May 22nd at 7 o'clock PM? Room 124, Town Hall here at 7 o'clock.
Yeah, I make a motion that we move the hearing of Abbeville Preserve and Abbeville Commons, Comm- comments, to May 22nd at 7 PM at Town Hall in room 124.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
Is there time?
Could I just say one thing? We haven't actually decided as a board yet to change that. May 15th is the third Wednesday.
Okay.
Which would be our normal meeting, but it's the day after town meeting. So we should delay a week in case town meeting goes for a second week, so I don't know if everybody needs to check their calendars and make sure they're okay for May 22nd because it really hadn't been discussed yet.
Would it make sense to do it this way only because it could go an extra day at town meeting and then we'd have to try to scramble and make it?
Yes, we can't do the 15th.
Right, so we can't do the 15th.
Right, so I just want to be sure everybody's available on the 22nd. It hadn't been discussed yet.
Any problems with 22nd? Good.
Motion stands.
Okay.
Chris, did you want to raise the other issue?
Yes, as far as the site control.
Yeah.
John, could you make sure you, at that meeting, you have information for us as to, do we have site control at that point in time? Okay? Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we will continue the public hearing for the enclave.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself for the meeting on the enclave.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good luck on Saturday in your polar dive.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Hill. Dan, I guess we're going to, we're going to handle the affordable housing development first, so Ms. Jacobson can get on with her evening.
Thank you.
Do you need to plug in?
I am connected, yeah. Do you know, where is that on the waiver list? I don't remember seeing it. Is there an affordable housing bylaw that's?
I think it's Affordable Housing Development Section 8, correct?
I thought so.
Yes, Section 8, subsection 8.3, page 12.
To the condition?
A waiver, right?
A waiver. Boy, when I can start correcting the attorney, that's pretty good, huh? Getting somewhere.
Can I skip that class in law school?
Watch out, it might be a rooferd. Okay, so, on page 12. Section what?
Section 8, subsection 8.3, page 12.
You're there, right? How come you're?
Okay, here we go.
Okay.
On my, on mine, it's a different page. So this section, if it was applicable, would require inclusionary zoning for the development. So the request to waive it is to waive it subject to the conditions of this, of this decision. Twenty-five percent of the units in this project will be affordable, so it basically serves the same purpose as the inclusionary zoning bylaw.
Any comments, Sue?
No, none other than, I just want, wanted to speak about particularly the layout of the affordable units.
Do you need the mic? He might need a mic.
I just wanted to speak about the layout of the affordable units and want to confirm that we won't have any affordable units side by side, that they need to be spread out as best they can throughout the development.
So I think the way the process works is that after the permit's been issued, the applicant has to go back to the subsidizing agency with the request for final subsidy approval. As part of that, they'll produce a plan that shows the locations of the affordable units.
Yep.
And then the agency would approve the plan. It's not something that the zoning board can actually regulate, but do you want to speak to what your plan is for the layout or the?
Well, I just, I guess I'm looking to see if, if the zoning board can propose something because we have a prior development where it went back to the subsidizing agency and they did lay out a plan and it ended up being different. And, and there are three affordable units sitting right next to one another.
Really?
Yes.
Which project is that?
Boyd's Crossing. So I don't, I guess I'm looking for some assurance from this board that, that we won't, we won't have that happen.
Yeah, that's surprising because I, my understanding has always been that they do want, want them scattered. The agencies actually want them scattered, so?
I, I agree.
Yeah, that's actually very surprising. Tom DePlacido, for the record, I'm actually going through a final approval process on another project and, believe it or not, yesterday got a letter from, just because there were quad units and they didn't like, they wanted one of them spread out even more than just interior units, had to spread them out evenly all the way through the site, so they won't be, since these are duplex units, there won't be more than one in, it won't have two affordables in one building, one duplex building, and they'd probably be spread out intermittently every fourth unit or so, something like that.
Okay, and I'm not insinuating that the agency allowed it. I think, Dan, what happened was they may have written to an employee that's no longer here and because it was our first go at, if you will, a 40B, he may have allowed that change to happen. So I'm just trying to learn from, from a prior 40B.
Okay.
Okay?
So, yeah, and we do have a condition that the regulatory agreement has to be approved by the zoning board, so I would suggest as part of that process that we would make sure we look at that plan at that point and making sure that it is scattered as, I think everyone intends it to be.
Right.
Would we put that as a condition, Dan, or would we?
We could, yeah.
Yes?
I think so. I mean, do you have a problem with showing us the?
Well, each, each agency makes, makes their own decision.
I know, but, but you can share that with us, right? The plan that you're proposing?
I can, I can share the plan that, that we propose, actually. You know, there's a whole regulatory package that we send in for final approval, but ultimately Mass Housing's going to make the call on it.
Right. Yeah, but when you give us the regulatory agreement to look at, if you could give us the plan as well, and then if we have any issues with it, we can raise it to Mass Housing directly. We don't have to get you involved, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Again. I will.
Now we can start back at the beginning, Dan.
All right, do you want to do waivers or conditions?
Waivers, I think.
Okay. All right, so I think the plan is to just hit on the changes from the last time, but as we go through it, if anyone wants to jump in and ask a question or make a comment, feel free. So I'm just going to scroll down until we have first red lines. So, actually, the, the first one was withdrawn, just confirming that that's correct, so that's out. Okay, scenic road tree removal. This actually is also a condition, and we talked about this last time. And I think the board decided that the tree warden would be the one who goes out there to confirm which trees are okay to be taken down, not the engineer. At one point, we talked about the engineer going out there, but you're okay with the tree warden?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the tree warden is the DPW director.
Correct.
So I think it'd be important just to make sure he's got the site distance triangle plan because that's, that's one of the issues with the trees is clearing those. Still in the zoning section, there's no new changes here. Floodplain district request has been, was withdrawn. Dimensional regulations. Made some changes last time. And, so for maximum site coverage, maximum lot coverage, we talked about putting a cap of 5,500 square feet on the footprint of all duplex buildings. Which one?
Same one, really.
Better.
Yep.
Okay, now I think we're in the subdivision regulations. Okay, so on the grades, I think where we landed here was, within 100 feet of the intersection, the grade shall not exceed 2% for the first, I'm sorry, for the first, yeah, 2% for the first 50 feet, 4% for the second 50 feet. And I think Sean confirmed that that was adequate. So we're going to stick with that. Is that okay with you guys? Delete this comment, get rid of this thing. Okay, slopes was withdrawn. All right, so on the stormwater management regulations, it's section 4.19, we had asked the applicant to provide a breakdown of what exactly he needs waivers from, and we did receive that, and this is what was, what was provided. And on, Sean Reardon reviewed these waiver requests, and his notes are here under SPR. So. Do you want to, do you want to explain them, or Sean, do you want to run through them, or?
Seems like if they're requesting waivers, they have them.
Do you want to just go, go through them quickly?
Sure.
Should probably use the mic.
So I think the, the first one was subsection 4, 19.1. It just indicates that you're supposed to provide separate recharge facilities for, for roof, and, I mean, technically, we don't provide separate recharge facilities for the roof. They do go to the underground infiltration system, but they're not separate from the rest of the drainage system. Then there was subsection 14, 4.19.2, which is providing, requires groundwater monitoring data. And we provided a bunch of soil testing data that talks about and includes seasonal high water, seasonal groundwater testing data, but there's no monitoring that was done as part of the observations, as part of the groundwater elevations.
Randy, just a second. So let's just, just to close out each one, so on his first one, the roof recharge, it's fundamentally providing the same benefit. In this case, they've got a consolidated system that handles the recharge for the entire development, so having separate infiltration systems doesn't really offer any added benefit. The groundwater monitoring data, as, as Randy said, they, they provide a whole bunch of test pits, so we effectively get the same information as we would from, from monitoring data.
And then the, the next one was just geotec, is a requirement to provide geotechnical testing data. Again, we didn't provide geotechnical testing data. We provided a lot of soil testing data, but it wasn't geotechnical testing data.
Provides fundamentally the same information.
Then there was subsection 4.19.7.2. There's a couple of requirements in there. One of them is to have culverts shall consist of RCP pipe and drain lines shall consist of RCP or reinforced concrete pipe. And also, there's another requirement for catch basins to have a five-foot inside diameter. The plans that were submitted just provide HDPE pipe throughout the site. There is no reinforced concrete pipe. It's typically, it's widely accepted throughout the state and various towns, and, you know, for, with respect to the comment about the five-foot diameter catch basins, four foot is certainly sufficient. It's, it's allowed by various DOTs throughout, throughout New England. Mass DOT is okay with them, Rhode Island DOT, Connecticut DOT is okay with four-foot diameter catch basins, and that's what we, we proposed as part of the plans.
So on this one's a little bit, a little bit more difficult to address because I think what Randy says is accurate, that forfeits a typical dimension for catch basins and manholes. HDP pipe is pretty commonplace now. The issue comes down to who's going to maintain it and the consistency of that experience, so this is a town requirement. DPW has expressed a preference for RCP, expressed a preference for five-foot manholes. If they're going to be maintaining the system, it would be my recommendation that you stick with what they require. But again, from a technical standpoint, I don't have any resistance to the change, but from a town standpoint, whether it's maintaining materials or ease of, of application or just familiarity, we'd stay with the same materials the town requires as part of their subdivision regs.
I talked to the DPW director, and he would rather go with the RCP pipe. It's what the town uses for its, its roads, and he'd like, since they'll be maintaining the main road going in, he would prefer we stay with that. And as, as far as the five-foot catch basin, it's got to be able to accept a, a machine to go down in, so that would be the only concern there.
We have no problem going to RCP pipe, and actually, a four-foot inside diameter catch basin would have a clean out. There's no problem with that there, and like Sean said, all over Massachusetts, but, you know, we can do a five-foot inside diameter catch basin and manhole if that's what the DPW prefers.
Okay. So I'll, I'm going to take these out, then?
That's correct.
You're withdrawing those, okay.
And then the, the next section, it was subsection 4, 19.7.4. Again, it was, just talked about providing separate roof recharge facilities, and I think we've already discussed that one. The next section was 4, 19.7.5. It requires fencing around stormwater basins, and there's also some stormwater basin setbacks from, from property lines and some other items. And, I don't know, Sean, if you want to speak to that? I know the plans don't propose fencing. I know that we've talked about this in the past.
Yes, this is kind of one of my pet peeves, is I think fencing around detention basins are a horrible idea. A, it really restricts your ability to maintain it, and B, the intent behind them is to keep people and animals out, but really what they do is they keep stuff in, catches trash. If someone does get in there, restricts ability for emergency responders to get to them. So for all points, I think a fence is a bad idea around detention basins, so I, I would prefer to see it not there. It's one less thing the town has to maintain, one less thing the town has to deal with when they go to maintain the, the systems.
Okay, we're there.
Yep.
Okay.
And I believe that's it for the stormwater section.
Okay. Next section is 5.1.4. This is the staking prior to construction. I think we already addressed this last time. We required you to stake the right-of-way, but not the lots, I believe, if that, if I'm correct. And then the next section is 5.2.1. This is the widths and depths of the streets. So we actually asked the applicant last time to give us a breakdown of what's being requested, and here is the, the list. So in this column is what's required, and this column is what is being requested. Do you want to run those through those?
Sure. Yep. I think we previously discussed this, that it will be a secondary street, and secondary streets require 60-foot ride, 60-foot wide right-of-way for two-way traffic, also a 26-foot wide paved traveled way, along with a seven-foot wide grass strip and five-foot wide sidewalks, and essentially, we're requesting waivers from all of those items. We propose a 50-foot wide right-of-way, 24-foot wide paved travel way. Our grass strips are, vary a little bit, they're roughly five to six feet wide, and we provide five-foot wide sidewalks on, not on both sides of the street throughout, but throughout some of the project.
And all these requests are consistent with acceptable practices and actually serves to reduce the town's obligation going forward, so these are all good changes for the town.
With regard to the, the 12-inch versus 15-inch?
Yeah, we have, we haven't got to that yet.
Oh, I thought, okay. You got to talk about that one, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so the next one is for some of the street depths, the minimum street depths. The requirement is 15-inch processed gravel, along with a two-and-a-half-inch binder course of pavement and a two-inch finish course. We're requesting a waiver to allow 12-inch, 12-inch depth of gravel, two-inch binder, and one-and-a-half-inch top course of pavement.
So again, on this, if the town is going to be eventually accepting these streets, I'd be very hesitant to do anything that reduces the build quality on the construction. Again, so the, the town would be used to seeing a certain pavement box, used to be seeing a certain asphalt thickness, so I would, it seems, given that this is actually a more dense application than expressed other where, other locations in town, that you'd want at least the same cross-section as what the subdivision plans require for.
I think we just follow the same thing we're doing with the, the manhole covers and everything. Follow the town standard.
I agree.
Agree?
Makes sense.
I agree.
So you're okay with the widths, but the depths, you want to not waive?
Keep, keep the town standard of 15 inches.
So, so just to clarify on this, so that we keep it 12 inches of processed gravel, four inches of crushed bank, two-and-a-half-inch binder course, and inch-and-a-half of finish course. That's the residential street standard classification that I'm pulling right off of the subdivision regs.
Right.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Sean, do you remember what the width of the road system is at Boyd's Crossing?
I don't.
Tom, is what you just cited what's on, in this column? Because I, that, those numbers don't seem to match.
It, it is not. Actually, you're missing the...
You're missing the dense graded, and actually, it was two inches of binder, and it should be two-and-a-half inches of binder. I think that was just a typo because that's what we were proposing right from the beginning.
Okay, so, so you're saying two-inch binder instead of 2.5 is the only change?
And also, actually... It'd be easier if I just... Pulling it from, right here, 12, four, two-and-a-half, inch-and-a-half.
But if we're not granting the waiver, we don't have to say anything, right?
I think we should just specify, though.
Okay.
Well, no, I mean, if, if you're not asking for a waiver, then we can just take this out.
Well, I just, because this is, sort of falls under a couple of different categories, you know, is it a, and how you define the street and everything? Because, you know, you got secondary, you got residential, so I just think, as long as, you could actually just say that we follow the residential design standard for streets, that's all.
Is there a definition within the subdivision regulations?
There is, and that's why I'm just, you know...
What's the definition?
It's so many units, I don't know exactly what it is. It's...
Yours below the threshold for residential, or?
It's above the threshold, I think, for residential. You happen to know what it is, Randy?
My, my position, Tom, on that is if the town's going to accept the road, and they're going to own the road, then it should get built to the exact standards that every other town that the town accepts is going to have to be built to. So if it, if it meets the requirement for a particular street, then let's meet those requirements in the subdivision regs.
A residential street is seven or fewer units. So it's, and a secondary street would be greater than seven, but fewer than 50.
So we're below 50, greater than seven would be a secondary street, then. So whatever the standards are for that, you'd want to meet.
It's pretty similar. I think it might be a half-inch thick, there's a difference on the asphalt. I, I just want to make sure that we specify that for the depths, but it is waived for the widths.
Right, for anything regarding the, the planer dimension of it?
Correct.
Those, those I have no issues with. It's just the, the build thicknesses, the build qualities.
That's right.
That, that should be maintained.
Yes, I did, just so that eventually when an inspector's out there looking at it, he knows exactly what he's looking for, that's all.
This actually is correct. Can you see my mouse?
Yeah.
So I, so I guess what the board is saying is it doesn't want to waive these, and you're okay with that, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I, I want to take this out, and if you want, I can, we can put something in the decision that says you apply with the secondary street.
Depths.
Depths.
Yeah. That's, yeah, I just...
Something you want to have in the decision? We can build that in there?
We could do that.
Okay.
Or, yeah, that would be the easiest thing, and then we could just do a cross-section in the final plans that shows that.
Okay, so I'm going to take that out.
Dan, take out sidewalks, too. Same, same would apply.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So on the berm, we went through this last time. This is going to be a monolithic Cape Cod berm along both sides. This affects some of the bonding issues, which we'll get into on the conditions, but this language that's in the waivers just is, comes out of the DPW director's memo.
Just, just a...
Sorry.
Just a clarification, it is Village Green, not Village Green Street, correct? I'm pretty sure it's Village Green.
I'm going to ask the people who live on Village Green.
It's just Village Green.
That's what I thought, so just want to make sure.
Is the quality of the road that you're talking about building better than what we currently have?
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't even define part of your street.
I wouldn't either. So, that's the thing. Right.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's a lot better.
Okay, so you guys are okay with this language, then, for the berm?
First, here, we're giving them money, no grant it. We're just giving. We just keep giving.
The grant's at the catch basins.
There's still granted at the, at the streets.
No, he doesn't even want it, they don't even want it to catch basins, no. No, the, uh, the DPW directors don't want it to catch basins.
Really?
Okay, the next two changes were five three-three-one and five three-three-two concerning catch basins. Uh, we talked about this before. It's, we're gonna, we're gonna require the five-foot inside diameter. So, can I, can I just delete this request, Tom? Okay, and the next one is, uh, the catch basins required on both sides of the street at continuous grade intervals not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty feet. They're asking for three-hundred-and-fifty feet, um, on one side of the street.
That's right. Um, we are asking for three-hundred-and-fifty feet. There's really just one section of the road as you enter off, off Village Green, where we would have three-hundred-and-fifty feet, um, on a continuous slope. And, uh, the remaining portion of the, of the road would have catch basins at least every two-hundred-and-fifty feet. However, they're, and they are not proposed on both sides of the road. Our road is, is pitched in one direction, so if we were to propose a catch basin on the, on the high side of the road, it really, it really just wouldn't, wouldn't do anything. Nothing is really draining towards it, so that's why we're requesting a waiver from it.
So, these are, these have their, these original requirements have their basis in kind of rules of thumb that Randy's design is a lot more specific. So, they actually calculate how much flow goes to each catch basin to support the fact that the catch basin can handle the flow, so you don't need the, the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot intervals. And also, to Randy's point, if we had catch basins on both sides of the streets, the way the street is graded, one side wouldn't get any runoff, so it's really superfluous. So, the design, we've reviewed, the design meets standard. So, I, I have no problem not accept, or not, not granting this waiver. The only thing I, I just, I'm just a little hesitant because it's a variation from a subdivision requirement, but I think they've given reasonable reason for why they wouldn't have to meet it.
And you're okay with a hundred-feet increase from two-fifty to three-fifty?
Yeah, in that particular application, yes.
So, maybe we can narrow that. It's only one instance, it's one stretch, it's at the beginning?
That's right.
Okay, maybe we can narrow that a little bit in the language. I'll work on that between now and...
So, Dan, what I would do is I would just waive the, waive the requirement altogether and not stipulate something in its place. We will review the great drainage design of the final plan to make sure that they're not exceeding the, the appropriate tributary areas to each basin. So, so they actually do a model that calculates how much flow goes to each basin. We know how much a basin can handle. We'll check it for that and make sure that the plan meets those requirements.
Okay, so you don't think we need to be more specific in terms of locations?
No, I, I would just strike the requirement, and then we'll review, this would be part of our review of the final plan.
Sean, I, with regards to the extension from two-fifty to three-fifty feet for that spacing, so if they don't have catch, if, if the catch basins are that spaced out at the entrance, and that road's always pitching downwards towards Village Green, I guess, do you think that that spacing might be a little bit too far at the entrance? Because there's really no low point at those catch basins, and water's just gonna shoot around those catch basins.
Yeah, so flow slipping is an issue, but we'll, we'll take a look at that. So, what I'm trying to say is, we'll look at the final design and make sure that those kind of issues are addressed.
That's my concern.
Yeah. Cause I think it's, it's grading down as you come into the site, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Sean, during the final design, if you see something that doesn't play out, what would, what would be your change and recommendation, then?
For example, a rule of thumb is a catch, a single catch basin structure can only take about one-and-a-half cubic feet per second of flow. So, what you'll see sometimes when they have a little wider space, you'll see a double catch basin. That allows, it prevents some of the flow slipping that Devin's talking about, and it also allows more volume to get in at that location. Because catch basins can be, they're, they're really deep. They're seven, eight feet deep, so they can get pretty expensive. And they're also, they're a big maintenance issue. So, if we can consolidate flow in one basin instead of having multiples, that's one less basin that the town has to clean later. So, if, if we can design them right, then we address the issues that the, the condition attempts to address. So, we'll check that design and make sure that it meets all those applicable standards.
And they would be required to meet that change if it's necessary?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I don't, I don't think Randy and I would have any issues if, if we saw something that was slightly over a foot and a half, or cubic foot per second and a half, then he, he'd recognize that, and we'd have to figure out some solution.
And I, I just wanted, the, the plans I have in front of me from, I think, January, the catch basins are higher than Village Green Street. Just, so the water's pitching down towards Village Green. So, there, there would be that, that bypass.
All right. Um, the next one is the, um, the flared and metal ends. Uh, we, we agreed that the flared ends can maybe be composed of the plastic pipe.
Actually, that's gonna be RCP now.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. So, we just changed that from HDPE to RCP.
Dan, that's because we're changing the RC, the, the plastic pipe to concrete, so the flared ends would be the same material.
So, do you need this waiver?
I, I think we do, because it says, I think it, I believe it says supposed to be, they're supposed to be metal.
Yeah. The by, the, the bylaw is actually outdated, so we've gotta grant the waiver with the wording that's an RCP pipe instead.
Corrugated metal pipe, I think, went out in the sixties.
Okay, next, um... Moving on to the Board of Health regulations. Uh, we had a question about the fees, and... So, you talked, Chris, you talked to Wade?
Right, correct. And the, the only fees that they charge is for the septic design, septic review in the field, and the permit, which is five-twenty-five per unit. And because he is a subcontractor to the town, we can't afford to waive that, so that will stand. There will be no other fee per unit, just the five-twenty-five per unit.
That, that's fine. We have no problem with that. We weren't, we weren't asking for a waiver from, from that one section.
Okay.
I, I think we ought to keep this here, just because the regulation says something different than what Wade told you. So, I think for his benefit, um, that we'll, we'll keep this in here and just say that you're, you're gonna pay the five-twenty-five fee.
The regulation talks about stormwater review, which the Board of Health does not do. So, I think initially, we were, you were, you were looking for the waiver for that portion of it, since that was part of the forty-B.
That, that's correct. We're just looking for the, for the, um, waiver on the stormwater review that they don't do anymore.
They don't do it, so we'll leave it as is.
So, um... Next. Groundwater supply protection regulations. This is a groundwater impact report. The board agreed to waive it at the last year. Uh, next is the DPW schedule of water rates and fees. There's a service connection fee of twenty-eight-fifty, and you're asking for a waiver for the affordable units? And...
That's correct, the affordable units only.
Did we talk about this last time? I don't remember.
We did.
I don't think, no.
I don't think we did.
No, we didn't.
I don't remember.
No.
What do you wanna do?
I don't have a problem waiving it for the affordables.
Twenty-eight-fifty is per unit, per, per unit?
It is, and there's actually other fees on top of that, that, um, there's another, I don't know the exact amount, probably about a little over three-hundred dollars, that we still would pay the, um, the DPW for a meter and to pay somebody to go out there and do inspections and everything. This is just a, an impact fee, um, for the affordables. And we're only looking for the affordables. We pay all the other ones.
Is that common? Is it something...
I think we've done it in the past.
We've waived the affordable before.
It sounds familiar.
At Boyd's, we waived it.
Yeah.
And at, um...
Twenty-five Brooklyn.
Twenty-five Brooklyn, we waived it for the affordable.
Any, any concerns? Okay.
Okay, next one is the, uh, application requirements for chapter forty-B projects. This is just a technicality. It looks like we require copies of the PNS agreement to be provided. I guess you didn't give it to us. I, I don't think we ever had an issue with this, but...
They, they already own the, they already own the land.
Norfolk Holding owns the land?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so this is a moot point, so we can just waive this. They have site control. And then the last one is, um... They, our regulations require ten sets of the application materials. So, this, this is something that's long past, so we can just waive this requirement. All right?
Now, you wanted, we, we, you wanted to discuss the, um, the stormwater on that, on the cul-de-sac area, correct, a little bit? It was Devin's question?
About the watersheds?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Do you wanna do that now, while, Dan, before we get to the conditions? Okay.
And just while Randy's getting ready, so I did check into what Devin was like, was referring to. Devin's right that the driveway does slope down towards Village Green, so we'll take a little tighter look on that in the final plans to make sure that there's nothing getting by there.
Yep. And what would it mean? It would be adding one or two drains?
A couple options are, we could, we could add a double catch basin there, so that way flow doesn't go past it as easily. Or, like Devin said, we could just put a small little low point to prevent water from just flowing directly into Village Green.
So, we did talk, I know Devin, you had mentioned this last time about the watershed. There is, so there is, um, well, we did look at this. There's about, I think, just under thirty thousand square feet. That extends a little beyond where our watersheds were initially delineated. And, uh, we will certainly update our final plans and our final drainage report to reflect this. And essentially, it's that highlighted area, um, up on the, up on this existing conditions watershed map. Amy, do you mind pulling up the proposed? So, it'll be reflected in both the existing and proposed condition. It really has very little impact on our drainage design because it's all forested, it's all wooded.
Yep.
Perfect.
Yep.
You know, the, uh, the CN number's relatively low, so there's, I think, in the hundred-year storm, I think there was like point-two CFS coming off from this additional area, so... But it, it'll, it'll be reflected in the final plans.
Sounds good.
You good with that, Kevin?
Yep.
Sean?
Yep.
Good catch.
Yep.
Agreed. He earned his two cents. All right. We're gonna, Dan, you're gonna get into the waivers, the conditions?
Yep.
Okay. So, now we're gonna take a look at the conditions for the comprehensive permit?
Okay, so, the, um, the red lines that are on the document are changes from the last version you guys saw on March twentieth. Do you all have copies?
Yes.
We have copies. Chris has the red lines.
Has, um, one has a DCH for Dan Hill at the top, and the other has JLS for John Smolak.
Okay.
Got it.
Yeah, so, we did receive, uh, proposed edits from, uh...
John.
Our esteemed attorney, John Smolak. Some of, some of which I've accepted, some of which I've not, and it's up to you if you wanna accept them. So, as we go through it, I figured, you know, John can jump in to make his arguments or pitches for certain language changes. Do you wanna just go through line by line? Yep. All right. Um, I'm not gonna talk about the typographical changes or this minor stuff. If you, if you want to, just stop me.
Yeah, just the, uh, the letter. It is twenty-sixteen.
Oh, it is? Okay. I have a note here about the brick, uh, speed tables, and, and we, I actually drafted a condition on this, which we'll get to. Uh, we just talked about the watershed area, so that can come off.
Dan, what was the, what did that have to do with the, the brick paper crossing?
Um, the DPW has a concern with the design of that crossing.
Yep.
Uh, they don't like the bricks. Um, they're concerned about, uh, issues with snow plowing. Um, so I, I drafted a condition that they would have to provide a, a plan, a revised design plan, just get it, get it approved by DPW. And actually, Bob sent a letter, I think, today on the...
And the DPW director said that he would rather just see asphalt with lines painted in it instead of using brick or cobblestone, just because of the problems we've had in the center of town, which I think makes sense.
So, would not be raised?
No raised, right. No raised, and it'll be, it'll be asphalt instead of brick or cobblestone. More money saved for the developer.
We do get bigger trees.
A little bit.
All right. Um, the, I think the first, uh, point of contention here is this construction management plan. John would, would prefer a more streamlined approach, to put it kindly. This language is, I think, the boilerplate that we've used in other projects, or at least I have. This is what was gonna be used in Abbeville, I believe. Do you wanna explain what your edits were?
Well, it's simply that, uh, this is a project that's in order of magnitude much, or many orders of magnitude smaller than the other projects. And I understand you wanna maintain uniformity, but I ju, just, we just wanna strike a balance that, uh, you know, for example, truck routes, there's only one truck route in and out. And, uh, and so the, the real concern is, do we need such a, an extensive or comprehensive construction management plan for such a smaller project? And so what I had suggested is just tying in some of the standards in a, in a more general manner, as opposed to having a full-fledged, uh, construction management, management plan prepared.
I, I guess my response to that is, I don't think there's a lot of a, there's not much of a burden here, because if there's one trip, if there's one truck route, you just say that, there's one truck route. I don't, I, I don't think we're requiring you to do a lot of work. I think it's more just kinda checking the boxes and having everything addressed, so that the police chief and the DPW director and whoever else, everyone has a meeting of the minds as to what the construction project's gonna look like.
Well, just a couple of comments with this is, actually, even the subdivision regulations, a normal subdivision, something like this isn't required. I can understand, um, you know, for a much larger project, yes, you, you would need some type of management plan. We actually waived the, the earth removal, so there's, you know, there's, there's, really is no, um, off-site trucking except for what you'd normally have in, you know, when you're developing a house lot. You know, placarding trucks, um, it's just not the same type of situation at all.
Yeah, and those were specific to the, to the earth removal operations in Abbeville. To, to John's point, I mean, or to, sorry, to Dan's point, this doesn't, this could be a much more truncated... To, to John's point, I mean, or to, sorry, to Dan's point, this doesn't, this could be a much more truncated version, but it still should be called the construction management plan. That's a ubiquitous term throughout the industry. It, it just needs to touch on the basics, the hours of operation, the contact people. I think the high points of the things that we talk about in here. Having forty units instead of a hundred and eighty or a hundred and ninety is a big difference in having just a, pretty much a balanced site versus a, almost a million yards of excavation. So, um, you see clearly a, a lower standard here, and they have a lot of room to work. And, and they're in a, in a low-lying area that any impacts are likely to end up more on their site and not migrate to other people's site. So, I think the, the standard on this is gonna be a lot lower, but the, the information that we need is, is still pretty much the same.
And I, I, all I was saying is this, we just put it right in the, the permit, that's all. To specify hours of operation, the truck route, you know, via one fifteen to Cleveland to Village. And just keep it simple like that.
I think, and it, it's interesting because as much as it's a smaller project than Abbeville, this is a true residential neighborhood. You have a lot of, a lot of, you have young children still, and there is a lot of traffic just because of the residents on Stan Hope and on Village Green. So, I think, I think there's no heavy lifting. I think Dan's right. There really is no heavy lifting in meeting these requirements, but at least if we meet these requirements, it heads off some questions by the people who live there as they're, as they're seeing this development progress. And, uh, there is a lot of traffic. You know, during the middle day, we don't see much, but there's a lot in the morning, a lot in the afternoon. So, I think we can check off the boxes and get through it, but I'd hate to just, I'd hate to remove it and go to a much more scaled-down. I think it's smarter because it is a true residential neighborhood, and it does, it is on, it is going to be intersecting with two of the major roads in town in the morning and the afternoon, Cleveland Street and Rockwood Road.
And to your point, to the extent that anything's not applicable, we can just indicate as such in the, in the plan.
Yeah.
And it's important to be consistent with forty-two projects. We, we have past forty-two projects, we've, we've acquired this, there'll be future ones, so we, I think it's good to be consistent.
So, so the past ones that were approved did have similar type of construction management plan?
I thought Rockwood did.
If I could follow theirs.
Rockwood did. We've done smarter.
And, um...
Tom, excuse me, I do have a question, though. Dan, you've got your noise and dust control, control plan for that, blasting, a blasting plan?
Well, if necessary. Blasting.
Okay, noise and dust control, shouldn't that say if necessary? Control plan mitigation measures, monitoring, reporting, it's, when I read this, it looks like those are, these are all the requirements. Noise and dust control has to be monitored, reported, mitigation measures.
But as Sean said, we can check them off or eliminate if we don't feel it's necessary. But keep them in there.
Yeah, and their plan could say, there's not gonna be any noise, so we're not, we're not proposing to have any noise mitigation measures, or there's not gonna be dust, so we're not, you know, I mean, they can, they can propose that, and then that'll be reviewed, and then if, if we agree, they don't need to do anything on that score, then that's fine.
So, for example, Mike, in, in most construction management plans, we'll see dust will be managed through the application of water using watering trucks on an as-needed basis.
Right, that's pretty standard.
As needed.
That's it.
Okay, 'cause when I read this, it looks like it's very detailed and very onerous for a smaller project. I just don't want to get into that particular barrel.
Yeah, I, I think that's consistent with our expectations, that we, we wouldn't expect a whole lot of language under these sections.
Okay.
It should be quick. No, it shouldn't be a lot of heavy lifting. Trust us.
Just, I just have one question. Is there any mechanism, um, and I only ask this because I just ran into this situation last fall. Is there any mechanism where if need be, you could work on a Sunday? And this, and this is, this happened to me just recently. This last fall, we had rain every single day, um, right from like, it was every Tuesday, actually, from like September to almost mid-October. And, um, we actually ended up putting a top coat on a road because you ha, you can't have rain that day. You have to have temperature rising, um, you know, above forty degrees. And, um, actually, you know, to get the, the road paved, because we had structures, um, you know, castings and stuff, set to the inch and a half and everything else, we actually brought a crew in on a Sunday to put a top coat on a road. I'm just thinking, you know, if it was ever Village Green or something like that, and, you know, we're all prepped and ready to go. Sometimes, some crazy situations hap, oh, and look, there's just a, a mechanism that you can come back to the ZBA and ask for something. But it would have to be, it'd be something that'd be like a very timely type of thing, um, because you wouldn't know. I'm just curious if there's, if there's that type of mechanism.
That is typically the board of selectmen, the police chief would grant. So, would we have that authority, or would that have to be a, a selectman and the, uh, police chief?
Well, the requirement comes out of the subdivision regs, uh, I believe, and...
It, it does. There's actually a town bylaw that, that, um, that specifies hours of operation. I think it's seven to seven.
Oh, there's a town bylaw on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just curious if there's any type of mech, believe me, you don't want to work Sundays.
No, we could. We could eas, we could put language in here that says if, if you want to make a request to work on a Sunday, it should be given to the town administrator?
Just something like that that could, you know, maybe it could be done in three or four days' notice or something. Believe me, I don't want to work a Sunday, I don't want to have that, but, um, last fall was a very unique situation with the rain and everything, and, and it got cold, and a lot of people didn't get projects paved, and you, you just try to finish something up.
No, that's fair.
And I assume, and I assume you'd be getting a detail as needed, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you'd have details and things like that and everything else. It's, it's really to get something done for the residents, you know, if you had to do something like that.
Would we have a notice requirement for the neighbors or anything like that in that, in that situation?
I'm sure, I'm sure it would have to require that. I think the town administrator would want to see it brought before the, uh, the selectmen regardless, but it could be done in a truncated manner.
Yeah, something that would be expedited within a week or something like that.
Obviously, you're not gonna have two weeks' notice that it's gonna rain on Tuesday, so it's gonna have to be done quickly, so...
Exactly.
I think if you put it, handle through the town administrator, that could be done.
All right, when we get to the hours of operation, we'll stick that in there. All right, so, um... So, actually, B-one-D, uh, the, uh, DPW director required there to be an update on the water analysis. So, that, I'm assuming should be pretty, pretty easy to do.
I just thought it was rather redundant since we had a, the water was all approved for more units, fifty-six units. And it was a, you know, basically a dead end, same type of thing. You would think that forty units would be, um, acceptable. There wouldn't be any problem.
Could you just get a letter from Environmental Partners just saying that? I mean, if, if that's...
It's, I, I don't think it's as simple as they'll just issue a letter. I think they're gonna do a whole analysis and everything else again.
Yeah, I, I think Tom states exactly what I said in my comment letter. They, they originally did an analysis for a much larger subdivision. There's no situation where a smaller demand will, will result in more impacts. So, from our standpoint, the question was answered on the larger subdivision. It's, it's by definition answered on the, on the smaller subdivision.
So, so the only issues they're looking at were the water capacity and the, and the water pressure?
Correct.
So, that, and that doesn't, so, so the layout of the, of the road and the lots is, is irrelevant to those questions, right?
I, I think the, the force main length was shorter, so, um, in, in all cases, it's less of a demand on the system.
You'll be okay with that?
I'm okay.
Kevin?
I'm in the issues.
Okay, good. More giving.
Okay, go ahead.
You're gonna have flat tires on your truck when you go out.
Okay, the, the next section is the deposit, apparently, uh...
Actually, be, before that, I just had one comment, um, if, went back to just, um, I think it's, uh, page six on, on USD, and that, it's E. And, and I don't know where, um, we, we could, we could put this or something there. Basically, um, it's, it's, uh, E, no, for Conservation Commission or Mass DEP required any statute. So, basically, all approvals have, um, for Conservation Commission, and then we get down on J, all approvals from Natural Heritage. And, um, have, have no problem with that. My only concern is, I, I don't know what's gonna happen with this boardwalk that we're proposing, and we have every intent to propose it, you know, go forward with it. I just don't know how the Conservation Commission or Natural Heritage, um, may react to that. And if we have it on the plans, and it says all approvals, and we don't get an approval from Conservation or Natural Heritage for that boardwalk, just some kind of mechanism in here that gives some type of latitude towards that? I don't know how you'd want to word it, but something along those lines for that. There just seems to be a lot of, um, questions with CONCOM on that.
You want this holding up the project, basically, is what you're saying?
Exactly. I mean, we, we, we're going for it. We have a design. We're, we're moving forward with it. We'll work with Conservation, Natural Heritage, but in the end, if they say we don't want it, it's, um, something that allows us either not to do it or come up with some, some other idea.
Is the boardwalk required as part of, in the decision? And you could just say, provided it gets approved by the Conservation Commission and Natural Heritage?
Eventually, you mean?
No, so, so what Tom's saying is if, if, if Natural Heritage doesn't approve the boardwalk, he can't do the boardwalk.
Mm-hmm.
He's still gonna need a permit from Natural Heritage to do his project without the boardwalk, so these conditions still remain. The only condition, conditionality is the, its relationship to whether he can do the boardwalk or not.
How about that?
John's actually saying to take a look at G-five and just make sure that, um, that would cover everything.
I mean, Dan, they're still gonna be required to get all the approvals they need to execute the work that they're proposing to do. Well, that wouldn't change any of those conditions that you had listed before.
Okay, so, I mean, the fundamental question here is that, is the board okay with, um, having its condition requiring a boardwalk conditioned upon him getting approvals under the state act from both the Conservation Commission and Natural Heritage?
Doesn't have to be?
Yeah, you, you would put him in a, in a box because, you know, you've got a condition that he can't comply with, right?
I don't, yeah, in my opinion, I don't think the project should be contingent on just the boardwalk at this point.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, I, I changed the language up here to... Where were we? B-one... So, this change would require you to get all your conservation approvals except for the boardwalk prior to start a construction?
That's acceptable.
Does that work? Okay.
Dan, we want, I guess the concern is, one of our tenants of this project was to make sure he could get to June. So, he'd get all his approvals except for the boardwalk, so he doesn't get the boardwalk.
This is only a condition that he get these approvals before starting construction? It doesn't mean that we still have our condition.
We still have our condition, that means, okay.
And, and we might want to, and we might want to tweak that so that if he can't get a boardwalk approved, maybe he can get something less approved? I don't know.
We've got it now.
But ultimately, if, if Natural Heritage says...
No.
You can't have any trail at all. I think it's unreasonable for us to require it.
Is there anything you hear in it, in doing the boardwalk?
There was some pushback from Conservation Commission. I don't know how it's all gonna fall out. We, we actually did, um, reduce the, the scope of work and the size of the, the boardwalk crossing and, um, have like a...
But they wouldn't have the final say. It would be DEP, because we would be waiving any local regulatory authority?
Yes, acting as, uh, the DEP, the, the DEP agent for that. They could still require, but I mean, you could go for a superseding order of condition.
Well, that's my point, is if you get denied for some reason at the local level, then you would be going to DEP anyway, and as part of your appeal in DEP, you would be asking DEP for permission to do the boardwalk?
Correct, yeah. It, it, Natural Heritage is the real killer, though.
Right.
We have a meeting next week with the CONCOM, right?
Correct.
To show them their new plan, I think, to show them their...
Yes.
And sometimes it has to do with the design of what you're proposing in terms of the boardwalk. You mean, he wants something different done in terms of how you're, I guess, crossing the wetland?
Yeah, we, we've got, um, instead of decking, we've got basically, um, like a, like a grid that allows light to go through. Actually, to tell you the truth, I think, um, the design here has probably less impact on the wetlands than people walking through the river all the time. That's gonna be up to Natural Heritage and them.
Okay, so I added that caveat to subsection J. All right, and then we are, we are at subsection K. So, you, uh, the applicant would not, the applicant wants the board to solicit bids for the consulting engineer, um, scope of work, and then they're asking for, instead of depositing twenty thousand, they're asking for, to be able to deposit twenty-five percent of the proposed price for the consulting engineer. My concern with that is that, you know, I, I don't think it's gonna be a flat fee from a consulting engineer if we're asking for a price, because it's gonna vary. It's gonna depend how many inspections there are, how many times the engineer has to go out and inspect, right? You wouldn't, I'm assuming if you bid on this, you wouldn't be giving a flat fee. It would be...
Oh, certainly, it would be key to a schedule, and if it was two years of construction, we'd have to beat through all construction because the town's gonna be accepting the road in the end. The town's gonna need certification, that is what the court requires, so... We'd respond however the town wanted it, however the applicant wanted it.
But, yeah, what I'm saying is you, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't say, I'm gonna charge the town fifty thousand dollars, because you don't know what your, you don't know what the costs are gonna be. You don't know how much time you're gonna be putting into this.
Well, what we, what we could do is, is if Tom estimated a construction duration, provide a construction schedule in this construction management plan.
So, in this construction management plan, he has a, a schedule. We could come up with a schedule of inspections based on that construction schedule and put fees to those throughout the entire project and come up with a total value.
I mean, it's, from my perspective, I think it'd be pretty easy to do. Say, for instance, the, the, the water department would inspect the water main and the services, that's general in any town with that. But, um, you've got your drainage. When you start to build your road structure, um, your paving, um, say drainage, we wouldn't maybe need three or four inspections before we backfill. So, you know, it would be so much per inspection. And if we went five inspections, it would be just that, you know, an additional fee for that. Same thing, you're, you're probably looking at an hourly rate a day for paving. So, I mean, they could put together some type of schedule for that, a scope that just, um, defines it a little bit better.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Is he waiting for your nod? Is he waiting for my nod?
He's waiting for my nod?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm still thinking about it.
I, I guess I'm troubled by the twenty-five percent of the approved, of, of the approved bid...
Mm-hmm.
...section, because I don't think you're gonna, you're not gonna give us one number. You're gonna give us a rate, right?
We, we could come up with a, certainly come up with a, a budget for the entire project, of which twenty-five percent would be put in escrow.
Okay, a budget, but you're not gonna, I mean, you're not gonna be held to that. If you end up spending twice that, you're not gonna...
Right, because in, in a large part, it depends on the, the execution of the work. If the execution of the work is done poorly, it's gonna require more time and more involvement. It would be a time and materials budget, but it would be a budget based on an expected, an expected inspection sequence. If that inspection sequence proved to not come up that way because of things outside of our control, yes, it would be an extra charge.
Actually, that's typically how the planning board does it, when we've done other projects. Even like right next door, T. and Union Street, there was a, um, basically like a scope of work, what inspections were, would it be provided and done at a certain timeframe? The underground drainage, stormwater, that was, say, a couple of inspections. You know, when paving's done, that's an inspection, and, um, it's just an estimate, that's all it is. If, um, if we don't do a good job, and they gotta come back and re-inspect or something, that's, that's my loss. And it's, you know, I gotta pay for more inspections, and, um, basically, it's an incentive for us to always do it right the first time.
And it does work that way. It's, basically, we say to contractors, the, the better you do your job, the less we're out here, the less you have to pay for us. So, it works out actually pretty well. But, but I, I don't, I don't think that's a bad way to do it. We just forecast according to their schedule what we're, our inspections are gonna be, and then put a price to it.
All right. And the other concern I have is that this is requiring the board to use, to go with the lowest bid, uh, for the consulting engineering firm. So, you know, that's, that's not how I drafted it, and it's not required.
No.
I, I think we've chosen, I think we've asked HeterTech to do the engineering review on this, so I don't want to be soliciting bids for that.
I'm perfectly fine, but... I'm perfectly fine, but the low bid, if you get the low bid, you get the low bidder, right? So usually, the cost is a function of the quality, too. So, you know, unlike low bid construction projects where you're, everything's completely specified, this is a little bit different where this is a professional relationship. This is an inspection obligation, a communication obligation. So, you know, I don't know if you'd necessarily be best served by the lowest bidder. Not to say that we're not gonna be the lowest bidder. We're here in town quite often inspecting things, other projects. So we may in fact be the least expensive option, but I wouldn't want the board to be selecting based on that.
That was just a suggestion because I wasn't sure who you were gonna go with, if it was either Tetra Tech or Beta. And I didn't know how you would decide which one. I really don't care, you know, either one of the two. I mean, Tetra Tech has done the review on, that's the most familiar with it.
Right.
I would guess that's who you would go with, but I just left that up to the option with the board.
I prefer not to be tied into the low bid.
Yeah, I agree. So can you wordsmith that, Dan? And I don't have a problem with 25%. I think that'll work out fine.
And if we can just put together a schedule like Sean has mentioned there, I'm fine with that. He's the most familiar with the project right now. I just sort of put that in there so the board had some type of option. Doesn't make a difference to me.
And Sean, would we make that part of the construction management plan?
Yeah, the easiest thing to do, if Tom puts a schedule in his construction management plan, like he did for Abbeville, it's a two-year project, a three-year project. And he's got everything sort of laid out. Excavation's gonna happen here, utilities are gonna happen here. We can look at that plan and target anticipated inspection timeframes. At a minimum, we'd wanna be out once a week just so that we can put weekly reports back to Rich and the board just to say how things are going. That shouldn't be much work, but, you know, a lot of times what we'll do is we'll say, take pictures of the work, send it to us. If we see something we don't like, we'll let you know. We don't have to be out for everything. And it's pretty easy to know who's doing work well and who's not doing work well. We'll know within the first three or four weeks of the work that's going on, whether it's someone we have to worry about or not. But like Tom said, is the better he does his work, the less we're gonna have to do it, inspect it.
I have no comment. We put together sort of the management plan there. I can have breaks there when I think we need inspections and put at least a template together that Sean can go from and make his job a little easier for drafting some type of schedule.
Good with that?
Okay, so I'll wordsmith this for the next one.
Alright.
Moving on, section C. John, jump in if you need to.
Actually, I had, this was my comment here. It's actually C two on page eight, the third line down. It actually states, "The consulting engineer will coordinate inspections and construction oversight." And I guess it almost makes the consulting engineer, are they assuming liability? Are they warrantying stuff? If they're telling me, you know, and giving me construction oversight, how to do things? You know, I always, the contractor coordinates inspections, you know. The consulting engineer comes out, makes comments and things, but doesn't really provide construction oversight.
Yeah, that's right.
So what we typically do on that is just adherence to the plans and specifications. So we will not direct means and methods. We will only tell them when they're not complying with the specification.
Yeah, I don't think we need that sentence. I'll take it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just added some language on C three qualifying that if the CMP needs to be changed due to the order of conditions or the construction management permit issued by Natural Heritage, then that's acceptable. Okay, so C eight is the hours. And so I know Tom wanted, you wanted Saturday to be seven to five, right?
Can we back up just on C seven, just for a second? Just says, "During construction, the site shall be secured against unauthorized entry or vandalism by fencing." Can we just be a little bit more specific about that? It's a 30-acre site, do I fence in the whole 30 acres? I mean, the other thing is, too, is we're trying to market homes and things. You do wanna, once it's paved, leave it open so that customers can drive through, see things and everything like that. You know, maybe it's, the entryway is fenced in while we're doing roadwork and site work. You know, just the front entry so somebody can't drive in. That's probably pretty common, and I think you've probably seen in other subdivisions and projects around the community. And then, you know, once the road's paved, we don't have a fence because we really wanna welcome traffic. That's our responsibility to make it safe.
Could use discretion, like if something really needed to be fenced off for like safety purposes? I don't even, I don't know if that would even be applicable, but...
There is no other access, right? I mean, this...
Yeah, you can't secure the whole site. So I think, I think to your point, you're right. Obviously, during site work, during foundations, during, when holes are being dug, we want it secure. But there's other means of getting into the site other than from Village Green, so we couldn't control the whole site.
But through the woods, right? So it's not like people are gonna be... So I just added, "The front entrance to the site shall be secured."
Yeah, during site work and...
But it also says, "Or by fencing or other appropriate means," so... Are you gonna wanna put something there at the front entrance when you're not there?
Not when it's paved. I mean, we may still have construction going on, maybe digging a foundation hole or something like that.
No, but I mean, when you're not working, when there's no one working there.
Not if we're trying to market homes and things. We're gonna want people to drive through on a Saturday or Sunday or even, you know, and check things out and sort of look through. I mean, that's traditionally what people would do. They'd go online, see, you know, a site and maybe take a drive-through and see if they liked it.
So Dan, what you could do is you could say, "Shall have the ability to secure the site." So put a gate out there, then they control how they operate it and when they leave it open. But if the need should ever arise, we know there's something there that they can secure the site if they need to.
I like that, yeah. So if you're doing foundation work, you can close the gates, open them up obviously after you pave and when you're doing some of your framing work.
Something like that, we'd probably, if the hole was deep enough, we'd probably put construction fencing around the foundation hole, to tell you the truth. Just that isolated area.
I'm correct. I mean, some of the projects that are going on right now, like Norfolk Park Street, whether it's in Rentham or Norfolk, I'm not seeing any fencing around it.
It's very rare. I mean, initially, like right in the beginning when we start a project, we'll generally put a gate up or something like that when we're digging holes and we got a lot of heavy site work going on. But once, you know, we bring it to a binder coat, we wanna welcome traffic. We want people to drive through and, you know, sort of look at lots, look at housing and things and, you know, pique some interest.
That's what I'm thinking, at the beginning, you might wanna fence up there.
That's all.
And then once the road's, the binder coat's on, you know, you want people to drive in.
How's that?
That's fine.
Yes.
Okay, so hours, so I believe Tom wants Monday through Saturday, seven to five? And Sunday, 24 hours a day?
If you can find the workers. I don't think any of us wanna go Sundays.
So the town bylaw is eight, is Monday to Friday, right?
Monday through Saturday, seven, seven.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Common, do you have construction work on Saturday?
It's actually in every planning board decision.
Yeah. The town bylaw allows it, yeah.
There's also hours at B one, under paragraph B one. So we just wanna make sure those are synchronized.
I don't think it's set the hours. It just said, "Provide your proposed hours," so... So are you okay with Monday through Saturday, seven to five?
It's actually 8:00 AM on Saturday?
It's eight on Saturday.
Yeah, but he wants seven.
I want seven, too.
Generally, I can tell you, we, you know, we hardly ever, ever work past like 1:00 or 2:00 on a Saturday or something like that. But that's generally, it would be like seven, it would always be a seven star time.
When you did, when you did the preserve, what was granted at that time for...
The village?
The village?
It was seven.
On Saturdays as well?
Seven to five. It's standard at any, actually even Nichols Way when we did that, that was seven to five also. It's very rarely that we work every Saturday or something like that.
I just think, again, I would say, again, we're dealing with a true residential neighborhood. It's not on a main street. I think we should probably keep to the eight on this one. I just think we're too much into a residential neighborhood here to say 7:00. I mean, I wouldn't mind it, but I think the residents there would mind it.
I'm just gonna make a comment. I mean, especially if like the trucks and the cars were lined up, you know, half an hour ahead of time. Everybody's rolling down the street, getting ready. I mean, we could be talking about 6:30 in the morning potentially, right?
Well, that's the next thing. I think we're gonna put a provision in there that the trucks cannot be standing before 7:00 or 8:00. That's the standard. The town, again, requires that. So I would say we stay at the 8:00, only because, again, we're in a, we're in a real residential neighborhood. I think we're, I think it was on 115 or, on Cleveland Street, it wasn't as big of an issue because, again, there's very few houses. But this is, there's houses right up against this on all sides, in my opinion. I'm all for early working, but I think we're in a neighborhood. Comments?
See, otherwise. I agree with you.
The only flip side to that is, my only thought on it is that, is that this project is sort of behind a residential community. So once a road is pushed in there and vehicles and workers can get in to that back section there, it's almost like, I think they're almost isolated. I don't know if seven or eight would even make a difference at that point.
I mean, I would think if you, if at some point that was the situation, you could always come back to us.
That's, that's fine. The only thing I would wanna do is just define construction work a little bit. You know, as long as it's exterior construction work. So if I had somebody in the house putting carpets in or doing interior plumbing or something like that, they wouldn't be limited to those hours. There wouldn't be no disturbance outside.
The problem is that is monitoring it. How do you monitor it? When trucks are all going down, I'm all doing, we're all doing interior plumbing work. You know, who's gonna know? It gets to be hard to, it becomes a logistical nightmare, I think. Sean, your thoughts on that? I mean, I think it's hard. And I think if our bylaw is 8:00 in town, I hate to vary from that. And I don't think we have on any projects.
It's only on Saturday.
Yeah, it's only Saturday we're talking about. Do we do that in Nichols Way? Did they give you a...
It was always seven to five.
Nichols Way, they gave you seven to five?
Yep.
Oh, that planning board doesn't know what they're doing, do they?
Chairman, what you could consider doing is you could consider limiting the size of vehicles. So to Tom's point, it's a carpet guy, if it's a finished carpenter, they're not gonna be coming in tri axles. They're not gonna be coming with tractor trailers. They're not gonna be coming with heavy equipment. Maybe you just limit the use of large trucks and heavy equipment in those days. And then if they're, if they're guys in a pickup truck or landscapers, they could still work.
I don't even care about landscapers. I was just gonna say, site clearing or any heavy construction equipment or earth-moving equipment would be limited to those hours.
Wouldn't that be done during Monday to Friday mostly? I'm just concerned about Monday through Friday, the kids doing school, it's not that much, not that big of a deal. But when you hit to Saturday morning, we're talking about baseball kids, kids going off to a baseball game and trucking it. I must have, when I had three kids, I must have driven in and out of my driveway seven times. And you're adding another whole contingency of more people driving down that end of the street with more younger kids now. I think Monday through Friday, it's not so much of an issue during school hours, so to speak. But you hit that 3:30 mark on Village Green and you had that school buses and the weather's nice out. You've got 25 under sixth grade kids outside playing baseball, doing whatever. If you could, and on the weekends, it's more.
Still not gonna change the seven to five on the weekday or the eight to five on Saturday, even though it doesn't sound like it'd be working 5:00 on Saturday very often.
You should have my... I think I'm done.
Yeah.
What's the issue? Is the issue, is the issue safety or is it noise?
It's everything. It's traffic, children, neighborhood.
From between the hours of seven and eight, is that, that's the issue?
That's the only issue. I think we just keep it at eight because that's what our bylaw says. And I think in this case, he's not gonna be working every Saturday. I just don't think it makes sense to change the bylaw.
If it's just Saturday...
You have to state your name and you have to ask.
I'm sorry.
You just can't start talking, you know? What do you think this is, a selectmen's meeting?
She's saying they're not watching.
I agree with you, one hour doesn't make that big...
You have to state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Don Shaw, Eleven Village Green.
Thank you.
It may not seem like a big issue, one hour, but if it, and you're not gonna be doing it every Saturday. We're getting to the spring, we're getting to the fall. It's, it's a neighborhood full of kids who have the mentality that it's their neighborhood. They don't, they don't look all the time. They're gonna have to change how they live on this street now. So I'm just stating a little bit of a concern.
My kids sleep late. I'd rather have the, have the start at seven while the kids are sleeping.
Just to clarify, I have no problem with seven to five Monday through Friday and eight to five Saturday for any outside work with that. I was just hoping that some guy working inside could, you know...
As far as the safety concern, no. I mean, the precautions for the vehicles going up and down Village Green, for example. I mean, obviously, we don't have to adhere to some, you know, speed concerns that the residents may have. I guess the idea is how do we reassure them that, you know, the vehicles that we take into consideration with their driving down to get to this construction site?
I'd rather see your crews get in there early and get out and, you know, get the project done. That's the way I look at it, Chris.
I mean, generally, if they, if they start a little bit earlier on a Saturday, they usually leave a little bit earlier.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, it's very rare you have anybody on any of our sites at three, four, five o'clock on a Saturday.
We were gonna define a process for him to get relief to work on Sundays, right? Why couldn't we define a process that applies to any time outside of the authorized hours? So if he needed to have somebody go in there an hour earlier on a Sunday, on a Saturday, he would use the same process that he would get relief for Sunday.
Is that practical, though? I mean, I mean, you know, you might have, you might, it might be Friday afternoon. You might say, gee, can you guys get in here tomorrow morning and get this thing done?
I just, I really don't have a problem with, you know, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, like I said, Monday through Friday and eight to five on Saturday, on all outside work and everything. And that's probably, I think that's everybody's most concerns. It's the bigger vehicles, the biggest construction vehicles. I mean, anybody coming to do interior work is usually just a van or something like that. And it's not, like they're coming in with a parade of vans, it might be a couple of vehicles or something. I, I, really, it's not a huge deal. If you want me to do a five and that's the construction, that's it.
I think, I think we'll follow Sean's idea. You're alright with that if we define no outside work?
I'm recommending it, that's fine, no issue.
Okay, we'll go with that.
And to be honest with you, the people that move into the project are gonna be the first ones that actually complain, saying you're starting too early and everything because they'll be right next door.
Okay, we'll go that way, okay.
What are we doing about the Sunday?
Dan's gonna draft that as a, to allow for Sundays as necessary.
How much notice do you wanna make him give to the town administrator to ask for permission? Forty-eight hours?
Forty-eight hours sufficient, do you think?
They have to be, because they don't work fast through.
That's right.
I'd suggest a little bit more, 72.
Yeah.
72 hours.
Really?
Yeah, well, Thursday to Monday.
Because you're gonna wanna have at least a chance for them to at least reach out to the neighbors or have some sort of a decision-making process, come back to technical house or, I would think.
The chances of this happening are very, very, very slim, so whatever you wanna write.
Seventy-two hours. Done. We took a little bit of that giving, right? We took it back.
Alright, in that last sentence, we had put a provision in here that the applicant would make best efforts to complete the construction of the project by a certain date. We left that actually open. The applicant would rather not have that requirement. We left that actually open. The applicant would rather not have that requirement. So, do you wanna have something in here that?
What do you, what do you recommend?
Two years? I don't know, Sean.
It's market tent, I mean, we don't still get the two years, but we just don't know.
I think this is, this provision is intended for the developer who is not as conscientious and sits on stuff, and, you know, it's, there are projects out there that lay fallow for years. And so I think that's what this is intended to do, is to give the board some kind of enforcement mechanism.
What do you expect is your time necessary? Rough guess.
I think the market absorption for this type of unit is about probably ten to fifteen a year. With that in mind, you're probably looking anywhere between thirty-six and forty-eight months, and that's market absorption. So you're probably looking at six to twelve months before you even really start marketing things, because you're doing the site work and prepping and paving the road and everything. So I would say probably forty-eight to sixty months from start to finish.
Five years is probably a good target.
So if we say sixty months, everybody in agreement with sixty months?
Yeah.
You agree with sixty months?
I'm fine with that.
If some, for someone's unforeseen market condition requires us to go beyond that.
Well, that's why it says.
It'd be for you anyway.
It says commercially reasonable efforts, so it, it's not intended for that, it's intended for somebody who doesn't do that, you know.
We may not have the same lawyer six years, six years from now, or the same board.
Why, where are we going?
I'm good for another twenty.
Does that work, sixty? Would you put in sixty?
Yeah. C-12.
I just had a question on C-10, and maybe Sean can help me with this one here. The last sentence, it says, "The applicant shall implement necessary controls to ensure that vibration does not create a nuisance or hazard beyond the subject." I mean, I can give a perfect example where it's inevitable and it's, there's no way you're gonna prevent that. We go to pave Village Green, you're putting down the binder court, and you have a binder course, and you have a vibratory roller going up and down the street. Everybody on that street's gonna say that it's a nuisance for that day or two that we're paving. If we can be more specific, or just, you know, that's, that's really open-ended there with things, and that's basic standard construction.
This was intended for the project development, not the off-site improvements?
You're still gonna have it when you come back and do the binder course and the top course and the roadways and things as well. You know, it's, for a few hours, when you do the paving and things like that, you're gonna have that. It's gonna be a nuisance, there's no way around it.
The only thing I'd recommend is, is reference non-standard applications or non-standard construction methods. So if they're doing anything outside the normal realm of construction activities. But to Tom's point, a vibratory roller, which, which we're gonna require to make sure the subbase is prepared properly, will shake places. It's not, it shouldn't do any damage, but it's a low kind of vibration, so it's, it's very noticeable.
And we will be milling that road, so that's gonna be a major, that's gonna cause a lot of vibration as well.
Exactly. These are, like Sean said, and that's a good terminology, it's, you know, it's something that's beyond normal construction methods, non-standard.
How about this? Does this work?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
If it's just the milling, it's gonna be a day or something?
Any type of paving or something like that, that you'd have a vibratory roller.
There'll be a road they would really enjoy once they have it. Kids love it.
Good. C-12, the applicant's gonna periodically sweep the street. C-15, this is the applicant's requested language, just carving out an exception that there will be the, a few above-ground utility boxes related to stuff. Stabilization, C-16, this was the applicant's change, looked fine to me, reasonable. Is that okay?
Yep.
C-17, that's John's edit, that makes sense.
Which goes to your point, the, no trucks will be on Village Green waiting to get into the development. The only trucks you'll ever see on Village Green waiting will probably be during the milling and, I think, the paving of Village Green and the sidewalk and so on.
Okay, C-18 is blasting, so this is my standard language. If there's blasting on the site, this is the blasting condition. The applicant was asking that we just eliminate A through H, or whatever it is, and just keep, keep the top part, that if there's blasting involved, they have to comply with the state regulations and obtain the fire chief's approval.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
No problem.
Where are the donuts?
Touche.
Inside joke.
Okay, C-20, Scenic Road, in that, we discussed this, the tree warden will be, will be the one who inspects the trees to be taken out, so I'll make that change. C-21, the applicant wanted to delete the last sentence that requires that the parking areas conform to any applicable ADA requirements.
There'll be ADA parking spaces there, but not the entire parking area would be ADA compliant, that's all.
What would be the difference?
Like, if there's eight parking spaces there, you might have two that are ADA compliant, not all eight.
Actually, the way that, the ADA regulations specify the number and type, so the ADA regulations contemplate normal parking spaces, I don't...
It's just a, you know, it's a federal requirement, so.
Yeah, this came from the DPW director, I think he was, he wanted to make sure that you were gonna do this, so it was just stating what you have to do anyway.
One of his parking areas shall conform to, to federal ADA compliance standards.
Yeah, that's how it's written, all applicable ADA requirements, so if it's not applicable, you don't have to comply with it.
Or just designated ADA spots, shall conform? Are there pre-designated spots?
I think, you don't have to pre-designate, you just have to make them available, correct?
You have to have a certain quantity of parking spaces. Once they have the federal requirements, they're gonna be mandated to do it anyways.
All right, so we'll just leave that in.
Just so there's no confusion, handy, or accessible spots have limits on what they can be for grade and cross slope and things like that, that doesn't necessarily apply to non-accessible spots. So, Tom, understood that those stringent requirements only apply to the accessible spaces?
C-22, the applicant shall submit to the zoning board and building commissioner final and detailed scaled and architectural drawings for the, for all buildings as approved by the decision as construction of the project is phased, and so you just wanted to make sure that you weren't required to provide all the plans at once.
That, that's fine, just as long as it's electronically, because Norfolk's pretty advanced in that. All the plans and permits are filed electronically, they don't take paper. And then that's open, that, that, you know, any board can, or person in town can go to those plans.
C-24, you wanted to strike from abutting properties, so if there's a retaining wall that's visible from, from an abutting property, you could potentially not use fieldstone. Does the board care about that requirement?
Do you know where that is, on the plants?
There's the potential, we may have one facing the woods behind the houses.
Facing the, facing the, what, the back?
That's the only place we can retain.
I would wanna, I would wanna make sure we note that, not facing any abutting, abutting residences then.
So it's on the south side?
So, so, yeah.
Correct.
You know, I would just say not, that would, not, if it's facing an abutting property with a house on it, I would not want that.
If it's visible from a street or in a budding property.
Visible from the street or in a budding property.
Yeah, the one where, the one that potentially could be there is actually just facing the woods towards Juniper, which is...
Oh, I understand, I understand that.
And we may not even need one there, but just in case we did.
You're not anticipating any retaining walls for the access drive to the basin, are you?
Which access drive, Devin?
The one, the access drive that goes to the basins, and it goes between buildings.
No, not, no, not with those, no.
That was gonna be my only other spot of concern.
Is this language okay?
That's fine.
And that's what the first sentence says, it says, "that are visible from abutting properties." And you say that it's not visible, so seems redundant with the first sentence. The first sentence says, "shall be used retaining walls that are visible from abutting properties."
Yeah, but then I'm saying, provided that if there's a wall on the southern side of Road A...
That is not visible.
Yeah, that is not visible from a public or private way, maybe constructed out of materials, so...
Right, but if it's not visible, then that first sentence doesn't apply. Right, because it says visible. Sorry, I'm a lawyer, I work with lawyers a lot. Right, I mean, the first sentence says, "it only applies to walls that are visible from abutting properties." So if it were not visible, it wouldn't apply.
Then he has a more specific sentence right after that.
Boy, they're picking on you tonight, Dan, aren't they?
It's a rough crowd.
You all wanna be lawyers. Not my job. How's that work?
It's not your usual stellar writing, but I'm sure you'll go back and you'll...
So now, if a retaining wall shows up that's visible, it's from an abutting property, we're coming after you.
Okay. Next.
Actually, could we just jump, we skipped over C-22?
You can't go back.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just the last sentence, it says, "Any deviations from the preliminary architectural renderings shall be subject to ZBA's approval and treated as a request for modification of this comprehensive permit." Just like a little flexibility in there, like, we said, like, the building footprint for the duplex couldn't be any more than fifty-five hundred square feet. Just the flexibility that if somebody wants a sunroom off the back of the place, or wants to make it a foot or two wider or something, it would still fall within that fifty-five hundred square feet. I'm not looking to change the front elevations or anything like that, or the overall look or something, but a little flexibility on that. I was thinking, any deviations that increase the total area of any duplex building to over fifty-five hundred square feet or alter the front elevations would be deemed a modification. So, you know, anything like that.
Or just add the word substantive. I know it's sort of broad, but you, you wanna have some discretion to allow small changes.
In the past, what we've done is just handled it administratively in the land use office, they go in, Rich looks at it. Okay, or no, I mean, I...
Deemed to be significant by the building inspector or something like that?
Yeah, something like that, or Billy or...
But substantive works, if you're okay with that discretion being held by somebody else.
Yeah, I would say by the town planner, yeah.
Town planner.
Question, being handled administratively through the plan planner. That way it's not, you don't have to come to a public hearing.
Yeah, it, because, because the way it is, is any deviation, so. Just wanted a little bit more flexibility.
Why don't you just give Sean your tablet and let him just start writing that stuff? Make it easy. I can see you really appreciate your help.
Taxi driver.
Taxi driver.
All right. C-27. Oh, this is the speed tables, so DPW doesn't want them. The reason you put them in was to control speeds, I'm assuming, so people don't fly down the road. So, seemed like a good idea to me, but...
It doesn't matter to me, I, I thought it was a good idea to have something like that, too, but if, if they have to ma, if they're looking to maintain the road, then we wanna build it to what they want.
Yeah, so the speed tables are a good idea, but it's the bump that, so the reason you use a speed table now, not like a speed bump or something like that, is because the speed tables, you can plow and you can work. The DPW director's, his issue was the materials chosen, and that if you do it out of brick, the brick comes up and it pops and...
So why don't we do a speed table, this is asphalt?
That's, that's what I'd suggest, just strike the top.
That's fine.
I mean, that being said, I, I don't think in this application a speed table is, is required, because it's a dead-end street, it's not a through street. So I would have no problem if the speed table went away, but I understand the desire to have it if you wanna keep it.
Who's, who wants to have a speed table, the DPW director or Tom?
Well, we proposed it.
He proposed it.
I don't think he wants one.
It's not, it's not an end-all for us, we don't care, the DPW director doesn't want it. We, we could just do, with the crosswalks, maybe, we could just, you know, do some type of, you know, painting, you know, epoxy painting or something that, that defines a crosswalk, like, you know, something like that. It, it doesn't make a difference to us, whatever the DPW wants, basically.
Personally, I'd rather see the dressed-up crosswalk to identify it clearly.
I, I will tell you, we did it at the Village of Rivers Edge, they look real nice.
Yeah, they do look nice, I've seen those, I like what you've done out there.
Yeah, and I think, once again, I don't wanna speak for the DPW director, but I know he's talking about the rotaries in the center of town here, and when you get the truck traffic, you get vehicle traffic going around, you know, it tends to, it tended to tear up those paver walks, you know, the pavers that were there, until they finally went to cobblestones. But if you go down the village and you're just going over them at a perpendicular, they, they've stood up pretty darn well for fifteen years. They don't get, they don't get the traffic and stuff, but I like that look, but it's, once again, it's up to the DPW director.
What about that? Everybody in agreement?
So keep this language.
Yeah, the way that's written's perfect, because it, it gives them the option of even getting rid of the speed tables altogether.
Thank you.
Just channeling my inner Caitlin.
I just have a question, am I paying for two attorneys here tonight?
Two attorneys, two attorneys and an engineering consultant, you didn't know that, did you?
All right, moving on to the age restriction, D-4. I guess you just wanna clarify the temporary stays by, by children?
Well, if you wanna cut off the kid's ability to see their grandparents all summer, that's the board's option. We were just simply trying to eliminate the possibility of establishing that.
Just speaking from experience, I've, I've had this happen, actually, over the village. Families that have, actually, I can think of one that has a family that lives in Europe, and then when they come to visit, they come to visit, you know, during the summer for two months at a time. And they stay there with the, you know, with the grandparents for, you know, a couple of months, and then they leave. So it just gives that availability, that's all I was looking for, and that's, that happens, it does.
I have no issue with that.
No issue, anybody have an issue?
No.
Fine. All right, so E five. So the applicant just wanted a caveat here that the HOA is responsible for maintaining the common areas, but if the town accepts Road A, which is the expectation, then the town would be required to maintain any common areas to which the public has access. So I guess that would be the, the trail.
The CMU is the.
Mailboxes.
Okay, but we wanted you to, we wanted you to maintain the retention ponds. Because you're cutting the grass anyways, DPW wants that included.
Yeah, have no problem with maintaining the detention ponds, mowing them and everything.
Mowing them.
Yep.
Not cleaning them out, mowing them.
Yep, yep, exactly, mowing them.
So we can put that in there, Dan.
Well, maybe we should be more specific in this. I mean, if it's just a trail, is that, is there some, is there any other common areas that the public's gonna have access to?
It would just be the trail, really, yeah.
So can, can we just say that, that, and the town should be obligated to maintain the proposed trail?
From the site to Juniper.
And, and the detention or drainage areas, I mean, the, the HOA would maintain those, you know, mow them and pick up any trash or anything like that to keep the place nice. I'm just concerned if, now that since we made the catch basins five-foot inside diameter and they hook a, an oil trap, rip it off, and the catch basin fills up with sand because they don't clean it, and it fills up a detention pond or plugs a pipe, that's a town responsibility, it shouldn't be a HOA responsibility.
Okay.
Where does the boardwalk fit in on this?
That's part of the trail. Welcome back, Bob. I had to do it.
About those flat tires?
Aren't we terrible?
Chris, do we need something to talk about plowing the parking area? Is it, wasn't that a concern of the DPW director?
It, it is, as it stands, the, the town is gonna plow the main, the main road, and the HOA will be responsible for everything else.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that included in this, or how does that get tied in?
It, it becomes a town-accepted road, so.
Yeah, well, once the road is accepted by the town, the town isn't, takes over all responsibility for it, including the, the catch basins.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the parking area for the mailbox.
So that's not within the right-of-way, so that wouldn't be accepted by the town and, and so everything else would be the responsibility of the HOA?
Tech, technically, I think part of that is in the right-of-way with that, so we'd have to carve that out some way or another so that it's, it's maintained by the HOA.
Oh, in the right-of-way but not the paved surface, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Same, same with parking spaces up at the end, part of those parking spaces are within the right-of-way?
It's, it's exactly like a, like a driveway apron. That's in the ri, the right-of-way, but the town doesn't maintain it necessarily. That's, you know, the homeowner's responsibility. So it'd be the same type of concept. You'd have a parking area that's within the right-of-way, but it'd be maintained by private, privately by the HOA.
Okay. Does anyone remember which condition dealt with that issue? The HOA's maintenance of the common areas? Actually, I guess it's E five.
E five, yeah.
All right, so I'll add a sentence in here that, that confirms that the HOA should be responsible for the.
Snow removal, retention pond mowing.
Does that work? Yeah, in, in the stormwater stuff we get to in, in another section, so. Does that work?
Yeah, I think it works.
Do you wanna put a mowing of the retention ponds too?
We get to that in the next.
Okay, you're not gonna put it here?
Okay, even though it talks about it in E five.
What's the understanding? Does the town maintain sidewalks as well? Snow removal for sidewalks?
No.
Or is that assigned to the landowner?
The sidewalk, the town does not maintain any of the secondary street sidewalks during snow.
You can hire me, I snowblow my, our street sidewalk.
I do over here.
What?
You can hire him.
Sure, we do it.
I don't go up to your house. I just go through Gibson's.
All right, E seven. So I think the applicant just wanted the final sign-off on the road to be done by the consulting engineer and not the zoning board. Is that right?
That's correct. I, I just don't know of any mechanism in the town that, that there's a certificate of completion from the ZBA or planning board.
The planning board doesn't issue certificates?
Not that I'm aware of. So I, they, they just figured eliminate that and have the consulting engineer give his, you know, approval and, of, you know, construction and everything for, for, before it goes to town acceptance.
But wouldn't, wouldn't the zoning board be releasing, like, if you, if you do a bond or a tri-party agreement for the road, wouldn't, wouldn't this board be the one to release that? I mean, the planning board would be the one.
It takes, it takes the place of the planning board, yes.
Yeah, the planning board would be the one to release that, so.
I just, um, I, I just don't know, I mean, if there's a certificate of completion out there, I just don't know of that mechanism in the town. The board knows about it better than, better than me than if there is one. I just don't wanna cite something here that there's nothing in the bylaws.
Usually the final acceptance is the certificate of completion.
If it's in there, fi, you know, fine. We'll check right now.
Yeah, it'll be in there.
I got the planning board.
Yeah, that would be in, be in there.
Yeah, what, um.
It's gonna be in there, it's on here.
You'd probably also wanna certificate compliance from Tom, Tom.
Chris, what, what category do you think we should, it would be under?
Yep.
It's gotta be in here.
Does that work for all, this certificate of compliance?
Dan, why don't we find out from Rich, you know, find out how the planning board does, and we'll do it. We'll just mir, mirror that, mirror that language.
That's good.
Tom? Why don't we just find out, why don't we just ask Rich and get, make, mirror with the planning board?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it's there, that's all. I, it, it may be, I'm looking for it now, I did.
I, it's, yeah.
Whatever the language is, I'm, I'm happy with it, whatever the form is or whatever.
Okay.
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 Uh, traffic. So this F one deals with the off-site mitigation. So we had said the design of the sidewalk shall conform to the subdivision rules and regs and shall be subject to the approval of the DPW director. We have a memo today from the, from the DPW, DPW director explaining what the, what dimensions he's seeking for the, the width and depth, actually, just the width, I guess, of the sidewalk.
Correct.
I don't think he got into the materials. Tom, is it your intent to comply with the subdivision regs when it comes to the sidewalk?
On, on Village Green?
Yeah.
The, the DPW, a, as close as we possibly can, yes, did. But there was some areas that may not comply a hundred percent, and we went over those with the DPW director.
And I think, I think what he's talking about is he's gonna do a five-foot sidewalk. The, the, actually, the ADA compliance is a four-foot sidewalk, so he's just, there's one area as you go around towards Village Green, towards Cleveland, they may have to make the sidewalk into a four-foot sidewalk as opposed to a five-foot sidewalk. But I think that's the only area.
That, and we, and we may have to meander a little bit here or there to go.
Right, right, but he's gonna try to maintain a five-foot sidewalk.
Are you okay with the applicant's language basically deferring this to the DPW director?
Yes. I am. Everybody else? I think Bob. Bob's, Bob actually went out there, we laid, we laid out the street, we laid out the grass strip, we laid out the sidewalk, so we'll keep it as close to five feet as possible.
That's fine.
That's good?
Yep.
Any concerns? Gotta grab a mic. Sure.
Donneshaw, Village Green. Originally, we, we talked it was gonna be a regular, just the road and then the sidewalk, and now we're changing that to road, grass, sidewalk.
Yes.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So now by doing that, you're gonna narrow Village Green from, the road, actual roadway becomes narrowed from twenty-seven to twenty-two feet.
It, it's actually twenty-seven at Stanhope. It actually, when you get to the corner of Village Green.
Yep.
It, it drops actually twenty-one.
Okay.
So it actually, we're gonna, we are gonna reduce it down, but what, what they're gonna do is when they, when they redo Stanhope, it will also be twenty-two feet with a three-foot.
Okay.
Grass strip and a five-foot sidewalk.
Not that anybody can pin anybody down, but when would that happen? It's not part of the scope of this project, right?
The DPW, ideally, if, if we have the funds, the DPW director would like to do it all at the same time. He would like to actually work and try to do everything all together, and it would make the most sense if we can do it.
Right.
Yeah.
My other question is, by narrowing the road down, we're used to, if we have like a barbecue or something, we're, we have enough room to park people in front of our house and then have traffic flow at a normal pace in front of this. If you reduce this road to that much, will it have an impact on that?
The, the town reg is twenty-four feet, but the planning board has granted twenty-two-foot wide roads, so it meets, it meets the planning board's condit, requirements, so I think it'd be all right.
It wouldn't be that out of the norm?
No.
Of an average street in town?
Well, our average streets are twenty-four. Most streets are twenty-four. But I, I talked to the, the planning board today and they said that they don't have an issue with a twenty-foot, two-foot road. And we've had to do it in, in, in town.
Okay, and the corner becomes the issue?
Yeah, yeah, and it's also, from a safety standpoint, the, the, the DPW director was concerned with a sidewalk right against the road for young children on bikes and also elderly that they, you know, as he said, if they sneeze, they'll fall in the street. So by having a, a grass strip, you give them some buffer. So it was a good analogy, so I said, perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I just ask a somewhat related question? Just logistical. Brad Walker, sixteen, Village Green. As there's a slope in my yard and I can see that the road will be coming into the, the yard, how does that work? Like, if there's, is there gonna be like a retaining wall or would you, would you bring the slope down like in my yard? So that way, there's not like a three-inch gap between the sidewalk and the, and where my yard is right now?
I think, I think the DPW were, working with, whoever does it, whether it be the DPW and Tom pays for it or vice versa, they're gonna, they're gonna marry, marry everything into each other. Yeah, yeah, they're, they know they might have to do a couple of little small retention walls just because of the grade changes up by the corner, where it makes that sharp turn, they may have to actually put a small retaining wall there. So they're, DP, Bob McGee is gonna work with Tom on this and make sure it looks right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, F two. And this is stating that the applicant shall repave Village Green from the project's entrance to Cleveland Street with a reclamation, and I think what that means is milling and overlay. Is that correct?
I don't know, I don't know if you need scar and overlay in there. I think reclamation covers it.
I just changed it to mill.
It's milling overlays.
Mill.
Yeah, don't, don't use reclamation. Reclamation actually involves grinding the asphalt up into the underlying soil, so. Reclamation's not the right term.
Okay.
I think that's what, I think that's.
Mill, milling overlay.
No, I think that's what we're gonna do is reclaimate. We're gonna re, reclaimate Village Green.
So, so there's two.
We are gonna, we are going to grind it up.
Well, there's, there's two things. When you say mill and pave, you, you mill the surface off and then you repave. That way you keep the same, your castings stay in place, your curb stays in place. It doesn't change any elevations. Reclamation, and at least as I'm familiar with, is a process by which you, you take the entire pavement box, the, the three or four inches of asphalt and six inches of gravel underneath it and turn it into itself, and then regrade it and then pave new on top of that. So, reclamation is a much more substantive pavement reconstruction. I think what you're referring to is a mill and overlay.
I think I would defer to our DPW director, what he actually wants us to state in this. Do you, do you, cause I got the impression, and I thought you did, he was, he was talking reclamation. I understand your point of going below the asphalt, but I think his point is he wants to take up all the asphalt, and that's what he's referring to as reclamation. Is that what you?
I think there was, I think from where the project entrance is to the corner, you know, I would say you, you probably almost need a reclamation there, but I think going up towards Cleveland, it'd probably be a mill, an overlay.
Why don't we?
We better get it, we'll get it.
We'll get specifics from Bob.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that, that one second is sort of real bad with a lot of patches and stuff. I don't know how thick the asphalt is, that might be a reclamation. I did have a question though, and maybe, Chris, you could, this here says the continuous width of twenty-two feet. Do you remember, was that outside of Monolithic Birm or inside, gara da gara? I thought he said it was outside of Birm.
That was, my understanding was outside of Birm.
Okay, so I just, if, just so we can clarify that, that is.
Yeah, outside of Birm.
And I just had one other comment on this paragraph there is, um, I just would ask that instead of the twenty-first certificate of occupancy, that it could be the twenty-fourth certificate of occupancy for a market rate unit, only because that's a pretty big expense to, to rebuild that whole road out there and everything. And if you're twenty-first, you're looking at, that's really only like fifteen, fourteen or fifteen market rate houses, and you lose money on the, on the affordables. So, you know, you're doing all this other work and stuff before you even have a chance for some positive cash flow. The binder course and everything will be done right when we do the main road, but it's just finishing that top section.
So what, what's your request, Tom?
He wants to go to twenty-four instead of twenty, per se of his occupancy, before he has to do the sidewalk, complete the sidewalk.
Twenty, twenty-four market rate units.
Okay.
I'm, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, and ideally, you do it as late as you can so it doesn't get damaged by construction.
Right.
That was another point too, exactly, too.
Any problem with that?
No.
Okay.
It seems like that would, this sentence needs, needs more work. I mean, doesn't this conflict? Is it the second half of the sentence? You want twenty-four occupancy permits for the whole thing, right?
It's like one market rate occupancy permit, and then we.
For the sidewalk and the road?
Yes.
Yes, on Village Green, yeah, the whole. Yes, on Village Green, the whole, that whole area would be done. And then we'd be almost, we'd be roughly about 70, 75 percent done. And you'd have less construction traffic and everything else, too. So I think it's beneficial to the town as well, to hold off just that little bit before you put the top course on.
So I would remove then this section here that speaks to the 20 occupancy permits? Oh, I know what I did. Okay, never mind. I'm gonna reject that change. So this actually says nowhere than 25. Right?
And, Dan, we also have to add in there the sidewalk on Cleveland Street to Rockwood Because I don't think we have it elsewhere, do we? I don't think we do. Um, you do, okay. You do in F1.
All right, so we'll confirm from Bob what the intent is for the milling project?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this can go... F8 is my next one. The applicant doesn't want the planning board's approval of the street name.
The town plan is usually the one that does, through the numbering system, the planning board does that for the units. And just a side question, who actually, if we wanted to get a name of some historical figure or something like that in the town that we can name the street after, who should I talk to about that? You mean like Weider Way or something like that?
I was gonna say, Kaliza Boulevard.
Weider Way leading to Kaliza Circle?
You would talk to the Norfolk Historical Commission.
All right.
The Norfolk Historical Commission.
I'll reach out to them. I like to have a little bit of history and street names.
Yeah.
All right, so you okay with taking the last sentence out, if the planning board is not gonna name the road?
Yep, yes. I'm okay with that.
It would be, I guess, who will name the road? The applicant?
Town planner would approve it.
Okay.
What I'll do is I'll look at the historical website, maybe reach out to them, and then we'll propose that when we put the final plans in, and run it by the planning director.
That's fine. Everybody agree? You know, we could name it after Luciano Way, because he, you know...
Luciano Lane.
Yeah, Luciano Lane.
Done. Let's do it.
He is in our zoning laws. State zoning law, cite him.
Could you possibly put, superimpose my face on that wall?
We don't wanna scare people away.
He's trying to sell these, he's trying to sell these...
He's gonna sell these units, Bob.
Boy, what a tough crew, huh?
All right. Next. Oh, F13. So the way it was written is that no building permits will be issued until the base and minacote of the road is installed. They'd like that to be reduced to no occupancy permit. And the reason for the building permit was just for access for fire and emergency vehicles. And I think that's a standard requirement, I've seen at least, but...
It just allows us to get a jump start with foundations and, because Norfolk doesn't issue foundation permits. So you have to take out a building permit. So it just allows us to start with foundation permits and moving forward with that, and getting a jump start on it as we do the site work. I've done it in other communities and things, and as long as we have access, we have to have access to get in there ourselves. So if I had a problem, we'd definitely have access.
I can add a sentence that the access should be adequate for fire and emergency vehicles. Do you want to do that?
Yep.
Tom's gonna say it.
That's fine. Like I said, we have to get in there with concrete trucks and other things, so there'll
F15, this is a boilerplate condition that I've taken from other towns. The NFPA has a requirement that the developer of a large construction site would produce some kind of construction site safety plan. I don't know if Norfolk's ever done that before. The fire chief didn't ask for this. It's just a condition that I've seen in other towns.
We just suggested that it be eliminated, because, at least in our experience, the 241 report that's put together by NFPA is usually for a larger multifamily structure. And it's really a plan for firefighting. And here, we're dealing with duplex units, and we don't think the, since the fire chief hasn't requested it, number one and number two, these are quite expensive to prepare as well. And we don't think, I don't think they're worth the cost for a project of this nature.
Yeah, the high-profile fires that have happened the last couple of years with construction projects have been, you're right, bigger multifamily projects, so...
If the fire chief doesn't request it...
Okay. No problem? More giving.
It's almost like Christmas around here.
It is, my goodness.
Dan, on F13, I think it's your, is it occupancy? If we're in there?
So G4, this required the open space to be, a restriction on the open space be conveyed to the Conservation Commission if it accepts it otherwise to a nonprofit. But you're concerned that natural heritage would, might require something different?
Well, sometimes I've seen them require a deed restriction as opposed to a conservation restriction. So I'm not sure.
But with the same effect, though, right?
It'd have to be the same effect, right? But one doesn't require the signature of the Secretary of Environmental Affairs.
I guess, yeah, that's fine. I think maybe we can add language that the open space shall not be further developed, or, if that's your intent, so...
That was the restriction, and then is there an amendment that can give the property to the Conservation Commission?
Or it could be a declaration of covenant. That's what natural heritage has done in the past. Or they've done a conservation restriction. I haven't had the conversation directly with them. It's either or.
And who would be the grantee for the declaration or the deed restriction?
It would...
Be the state?
Yeah, the one that I've done is, was with the state.
Does the board care about the town holding restriction? I mean, the point of this was that the town would control it, so that if someone were to do something back there, that we'd have a restriction we could enforce. And we could just put in language that the open space shall not be developed, and that we'd have the conference permit to enforce.
I think that's a better way.
Is that adequate? Okay.
Everybody agree?
Yes.
Quick. Okay, G5. Yeah, we talked about this. So just one caveat, subject to obtaining all applicable permits and approvals. I guess I'm a little concerned about this language in a form reasonably acceptable to the applicant. I mean, that seems to be, that would give you an out if you didn't like the conditions that were put on it by the Conservation Commission. And again, it's actually not the commission, it's DEP. So I think it should say, you know, subject to obtaining all applicable permits and approvals. I mean, you could always come back to the board, you know, if...
Yeah, I just was concerned if there was something outrageous
Right.
that came out. But as long as we can come back to the board, I'm fine with that.
I thought you were saying that there would be outrageous.
Sean, are you done designing the Tobin Bridge-type board crossing for us yet? Have you done that?
All right, so we'll go with this language here. G8, if you're gonna do irrigation, you'd have to dig your own well. You wanted that stricken?
I don't get it. The town in Norfolk doesn't let you...
Town in Norfolk doesn't allow following water abuse for irrigation.
Some residents don't follow the rules.
Dan, a question.
Yep.
All right. Or, I guess, have one more. Was there a plan at one point showing landscaping at Village Green across from the driveway entrance?
In terms of the mitigation?
The private property?
Yeah, there is.
There is, that's in the site plans.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, there is. Yeah.
There was, actually, it was an exhibit that was presented. There was nothing shown in the plans that have been submitted thus far
Okay.
with respect to that.
And they actually have a lot of planning there, so it's gonna have to be, you know, it's gonna be tricky. They do a lot of plannings there now.
Is that something that should be included in condition?
I thought we had in the landscaping. Is it not in there?
I thought that was more towards
I didn't see anything in it. It's not in G1.
So you had, you called the G8 to it? Did you kind of approve plans of courses?
I'm pretty sure I had a condition here, so I'll look for it.
Okay.
I just, I was reading it, and it was just mostly on site.
Yeah, no, I think we should have something more specific on that, so I'll look for it.
Do we just want to include that as part of the, one of the items to be included as part of the approved plans? Under A?
Yep.
Just tie it in that way, rather than just exhibits, because we don't know what that But the approved plans didn't have anything, any landscaping opposite the driveway entrance. Right?
The plans that were submitted initially, yes.
Right.
Right.
So...
I'll make a note to look for something in the decision. If not, we'll add it to it.
If we change it to the approved final plans, because we would expect to see that on the final plans. So Randy, not Randy, what was the other gentleman from?
Oh, Matt.
Matt had presented it at the hearing.
He did.
So we would expect on the final plan submission, we would expect to see those landscape improvements as part of that package.
Okay. I'll go back and add that. All right, so back to stormwater. So I had made a reference to Section 4.19, but you wanted that stricken, but you do have to... We, yeah, this says you have to comply with it except as waived.
I think the language is fine.
I just made some changes here on H4 that, just eliminating any duplicity with peer reviews of the stormwater system. All drainage areas located outside of the road, a right-of-way shall be perpetually cleaned and maintained in good working order by the applicant or the successor HOA. So that deals with the drainage basins. If you want, I can add, you know, mode, if you want to be more specific to that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just add the mowing. Grass cutting, whatever.
I had a sentence that said the town should not be responsible for maintaining the drainage infrastructure beyond the limits of the right-of-way, but you struck it. But that, aren't we in agreement that the town is not responsible for the drainage ponds and the discharges?
Which one are you on, Dan?
H4.
H4, at the end of H4?
Yeah, the HOA would mow the ponds, clean the trash out, you know, because it behooves them to keep it looking nice. But if there was something that was compromised in the drainage system, the DPW didn't maintain it properly, or clean catch basins, and it compromises the pipes going to the detention basin or causes an issue there, that shouldn't be the HOA's issue. If they don't clean catch basins, they fill up with sand, and then it fills up the pipe. That's the DPW, not the HOA.
But isn't that in the road? How would that affect the drainage pond?
Well, you have a pipe that goes from a manhole to the head wall that would be in the drainage pond. If something happened there with it, that would be...
Yeah, so the way to handle that is if that eventuality occurs, then you deal with that eventuality. You don't, we don't forecast it in this. So, I mean, you think you gotta assume that the town's gonna, under its MS4 permit, is gonna have the obligation to maintain the infrastructure. So you have to assume that it's gonna do it according to their requirement.
So, I mean, you think you gotta assume that the town's gonna, under its MS4 permit, is gonna have the obligation to maintain the infrastructure, so you have to assume that it's gonna do it according to their requirements.
Yeah, as long as that's in there, that the town maintains the infrastructure, that's fine. And the, and the HOA maintains the mowing.
So just to understand, you, th- there's a circumstance by which if, if the town didn't clean out the catch basins, that sediment would then get into the drainage basin and cause clogging or, or damage to the basin?
Basin, the indoor pipes, or structures. It's conceivable.
Yeah, so, so what I wanna be clear on is, is sediment gets through catch basins and into the detention pond. That, that's gonna happen. So, so we don't want it to be a, a, a situation where we think that if, if there's sediment and stuff in the detention pond, that something went wrong in the catch basins. Catch basins only clean so much. But Tom's point is if, if the town goes and breaks all the, the, the hoods in the catch basins and all the trash ends up in the ponds, well, then I would think you'd have a, a, a issue to discuss with the town and you'd have to work, work out a solution to that. I don't think you wanna try and forecast that eventuality in this decision, if it's clearly not operated the way it was intended to be, and we'd have to deal with that on a case-by-case basis.
So I, so I guess we could take out the sentence, it doesn't, taking out the sentence doesn't impose an obligation on the town. Affirmatively. And, and the way this is written without that sentence is that everything outside of the right-of-way is the HOA's responsibility. So if there's a dispute 10 years from now, then-
You work it out.
You work it out, it's not handled by the decision.
The, the only complication is, so, under the town's MS4 permit, they're gonna have to maintain a record of inspections and things like that. So all I would ask is that, that in, that they provide documentation to the town as needed to support the town's filing requirements. So the, the detention pond is part of the stormwater system that the town has an obligation to inspect and maintain under its MS4 permit. They delegate that responsibility to the HOA. The HOA just needs to provide documentation to the town that they're doing it so that the town can include it in their filings. That's perfect. For MS4 compliance.
I'm a little bit confused by this. I, I thought, so is the homeowners association, as soon as you get out of that right-of-way, is responsible for... The way I read this is they'd be responsible for everything outside the right-of-way?
Yeah. H8, um...
Gee, Dan, one quick question, sorry. What about the underground system? Is that gonna be the town's responsibility or the HOA's responsibility?
That's the town's responsibility, that's within the right-of-way. The one that's up front, yeah, yeah.
What are you thinking?
Not a fan. I don't know if the D, did DPW director speak to that at all?
No.
I think he said as long as he can get a vac truck in there, or, you know, or, as long as he can get a clam shell in there, he's fine, or a vac truck.
Do you have isolate a row in that?
Yes.
Alright, okay. That should, that should be alright then.
Okay, uh, H8. You're okay with this, right?
Yeah, can we just back up one second on H6?
Yep.
Responsibilities to the successor HOA or the town of Norfolk?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, H8, are you guys okay with this now?
Well, isn't, didn't we say the catch basins are five by five? That's what we said, right?
Alright.
And they're five inch diameter. Five foot diameter.
Five foot diameter, that's right. So why are we saying a large enough opening? Do we wanna specify it?
That's, yeah, this is superfluous, this-
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Dig it out?
Yeah, I would take it out completely. Because the town actually doesn't even own a clam shell, we have to sub it out, so it would be Norfolk vehicles doing it.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So just wipe that out.
So the, I mean, the, the, the whole concern with the clam shell bucket is just, that's just the grate. As long as the grate, I'm not sure if the grate's specified, you'd subdivision rules and things, but if the grate's wide enough, then they can get the clam shell in.
Right, and the town specified five by five, so that's what he's gonna do. Five foot diameter, I guess.
Devin's correct, and he's basically saying the catch basin is 24 inch by 24 inch, and you gotta make sure that, that size doesn't reduce down small enough that it doesn't turn into 15 by 15.
Right.
Did, did we say grate, or did we say the catch basin?
Catch basin is the whole structure, it's the, the precast, the frame and cover, everything.
Actually, the reason for the five, why the five foot helps you in, with a clam shell is because there's a hood over the, the outlet from the catch basin. On a four foot manhole, that hood extends into the area below the catch basin grate. On a five foot, the hood is outside of that area below the grate, so you can get down past the hood without getting hung up with the clam shell.
Oh, okay.
How do you like that?
Okay.
Sean knows his catch basins.
Sean knows his catch bases.
Mike combines sewer manholes.
Okay, affordability requirements, there were really just minor edits here. Surety. Okay, so you're proposing that, that your obligation to finish all the infrastructure would, would arise... At the, at the 24th occupancy permit? The market rates, so that, so if you build three to one, then it's really... How many market rate units are there, 30?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay. Is that okay with everybody here?
Sounds good to me.
Why did you wanna strike C?
Well, the landscaping requirement, like around a house or like that, actually, any closing or anything else that we have, um, a bank is gonna have a, a holdback or anything if we can't do the landscaping, so it's like we're getting double hit here with this. If there's no landscaping down in a house, then the finance, you know, whoever's financing the house will actually have a, require a holdback. I guess, what's, what's your objective, I mean, what are you trying to?
The, the purpose of this was to be flexible to you, so that, because otherwise you'd have to install the street trees and everything at the 24th occupancy permit, but if that fell in the middle of winter...
Well, the other thing is too, what happens if we're still building those last eight houses or something, or 10 houses? You don't wanna be planting trees and doing landscaping when you, when you're doing those.
Yeah. Yeah, we usually have a, I, I, I thought we usually stru, structure the landscaping differently so that you can finish the landscaping at the end.
I mean, we would complete the landscaping as we do each house, going through and around that.
Could have a, just an allowance to defer with a bond. For any reason, any part of the landscaping with, as long as they bond it.
Yeah, but I think we also should be clear that the landscaping doesn't need to be finished until the end of the project. Is that okay with you?
Well, that means-
Yeah.
Yes.
Like the street trees and-
Yeah, that makes more sense.
What if the, what if the project goes like three or four years, you'd have no landscaping there possibly?
I, I'd prefer to do the street trees as we build the houses, so basically it's complete as we're moving down the road.
So, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, so after the 24th market rate house, either, either everything's done or it needs to be bonded.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Which gives him the flexibility to do it as he goes, right?
Right.
Is it just for the landscaping or the, the whole thing? I'm just, I'm just confused, I'm just trying to clarify this for myself here.
When you say the whole thing, street paving and other, and-
Like if we go back up to B, the 24th occupancy permit, because it's a monolithic berm that has to be done on the top coat-
Right.
So we wouldn't have grass strips in or sidewalks at the 24th one. Because that's, you're really gonna put the top coat in, your monolithic berm, and then you basic grade your sidewalk off of that, and your grass strip, you have nothing there to hold back your lumen or anything if you don't have your berm in.
I, I would think any infrastructure after the 24th occupancy permit should either be done or bonded.
I agree. I agree.
And that gives you the flexibility to defer whatever you want, as long as the bond's in place.
After, can we make it just the, the 24th market rate occupancy permit, so it's consistent with the other paragraph we had in here? And that's basically about 70, 75% done, and then that's when you would bond it, if you weren't complete. Because I, I, I really wanna have as much site work and house construction done before we put the top course on.
Yeah, let me think about this, I, we've had other language in these, in these sections dealing with, you know, switching over to tri-party agreements or bonding, and I don't know why we didn't include that, I usually have a, a provision that if you wanna switch over.
Yeah, I think you were, I think you were assuming that all the, um, infrastructure would be complete except for the landscaping, and that's why the condition's written that way, but because of the monolithic berm requirements, it's written a little bit differently.
We're, because we do wanna keep it, I mean, we're in a situation right now with meeting house, where they're gonna have to probably post a bond up behind us here, because they haven't finished and they want their occupancy permits. So it'll be consistent.
So maybe it's if after the issuance of the 24th occupancy permit, for market rate units?
Right, that's what I'm saying. If it isn't all done after the issuance of the 24th, then you'll have to bond it, everything to one and a half times... The retail value, including the grass strip, the sidewalk.
Pretty sure the planning board has a schedule with that, with, I mean, we just follow the planning board's schedule that they already have for them.
I mean, zoning board has one, because we're actually using, like I said, we, we have a situation right now, it's actually part of our agenda tonight, with regard to that.
Is it the same one as the planning board?
No, I think it's different, but Dan, I think we've used it, the same one we used at 25, maybe, we have to look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's different, a little different from theirs.
So, so, basically, it's bindered, we can build up to 24 market rate units, which would be 32 total, which would be roughly, was 75%? No, yeah. 32, well, about 75, it's 80%, 80%, and then the last eight units, you'd have to have the road completely done up bonded. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'll work on that.
Hmm?
I'll work on that.
Okay.
Alright, then J2, this was a site, site stabilization bonding requirement. I don't recall if we used this in the past in Norfolk, no, I've used it in other towns. So- Right. This is if he, you know, if he goes out there, clears the entire site, and leaves it unstabilized, and, you know, moves to Florida, and the town is left with an empty site.
And then chickens fall from the sky.
We haven't done this in the past, though, I don't think.
We didn't use it in Rockwood?
I don't think it's in your subdivision regulatory requirements.
I, I wouldn't expect it to be in the subdivision regs, it's kind of a newer concept.
Anybody have an issue?
So there's, you're gonna have an order of conditions that's gonna require similar stabilization.
Right.
You also have a NIPD's permit that specifies that anything left for, I think, 30 days has to be stabilized.
Right.
Granted, the core's not gonna come down and sort of take responsibility here, but it, it's still a compliance obligation under their permit.
This is really been a situation where the developer skips town. And that, and you've had that situation, didn't we have the problem in town center?
Yeah.
Table it?
How would you, um... What would have to be the value of that bond, how would you determine that?
I think we'd ask our consulting engineer for an estimate.
And what would be, it would be bonding, just the stabilization, but we've, we've only got mechanisms to bond the sta, to do the stabilization.
It would really just be lumen seed the entire area, that would, that would be it.
I'm okay with removing, everyone's okay with moving it? Are you okay with not having it, or do you wanna have a, a bond for this?
I'd like to have the section, if we can have that in place, but it would have just reasonable for this situation. Yes, we wanna provide the lumen scheme from having-
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, even, even this one here, don't they have an obligation to maintain it, not just lumen seeded, but to mow it so it doesn't get unsightly?
I think we had to go back and do-
I mean, great, this is center of town here, but I mean-
We had to go back and do something with that after the fact, I believe.
Yeah, that was a bit of, a little different, a little different, a little different than this.
That was pretty bit different, yeah.
That was different, that was almost post-construction.
Well, again, Dan, what normally happens in what you've done before to be-
We actually did this in Rockwood.
Huh?
We did it in Rockwood, it's-
I thought so too.
It's condition G4.
We did?
Yes, I thought so too.
Twenty-five thousand.
But it's also covered, I mean, by the order of conditions, as mentioned before too, I mean-
It's not, it's not a bond, is it?
It's not a bond, but it's an obligation, stabilization.
But that's the whole point, the point of this is that, but the point of this is if we, if you all skip town, and, and we have nothing to enforce, so...
And when we'd re, when we'd remove that? That bond, that would be only till, because then once he, once he starts construction?
The last sentence, it's released upon completion of the roadway.
Oh, if, if you wanna put the $25,000 in there with a tripod date agreement or a bond, um, that's fine, just call it a day.
And it could be applied to the bond in the private, private one after the 24th house.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
How many units was Rockwood?
Thirty-two.
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 So about the same size.
Yeah.
Also use the same language, is that working?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Wow.
We should be on overtime with this, right? Seven and a half right now?
Absolutely.
I wanna make sure that nobody, that future residents of the enclave wouldn't be able to take down trees behind their property. I don't think that they could, but they, they wouldn't be able to, like, let's say, remove the buffer of trees that's being left in the future. There's something that's written that says that they, that future residents of the enclave wouldn't be able to cut down the trees behind them, so that way they, they could cut all the way to the property line and remove the privacy that, that Tom has given us.
Won't that, you know, good point. Won't that be covered though in that, where we just went through? With the transfer of that land to the conservation, through a conservation?
Which, which part of the site you're talking about? Your side, your side?
He's saying that the, those lots go into the buffer zone, so there's areas, each one of those lots will actually be, and there'll be a wooded area behind each house.
On the north side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm at 16 Village Green, where the road's going in.
Right. But that's not part of the open space, I don't think.
It's not.
So, but we have a buffer zone. I thought we had, don't we have a buffer?
Fifty foot.
Fifty foot buffer?
Yeah, there is a buffer. I'm just saying that for future residents from taking that down, so, and then losing the privacy that we have right now, or that we will have, you know, when the construction first goes in.
And how, how is that possible, Tom? Has it been a restriction?
I mean, it, it's a restriction, it's a condition of the permit that's binding upon all successors, including lot owners, so... I mean, the enforcement mechanism is if you see somebody doing that, you go to the, the building inspector and ask for enforcement of the condition.
Okay, so, so you're saying that that is accounted for, so they wouldn't be allowed to do that, to take, to, to be able to cut down trees behind their property, to the property line?
Does that end up in a deed of some sort?
No, it's right, he has it right here.
Oh, if I say, but the, the homeowner would see this, how would the homeowner, the next homeowner, or they, how do they see that?
Oh, I see, yeah. We could put a requirement to include that in the deeds.
Yeah.
That's, I think, what the gentleman's asking for.
This encumber title?
Permit does, but to the point, no one's gonna see this. Thank you.
Thank you.
We could take language right from that paragraph and put it in the deed.
Sean, behind you.
Chris Larity, 18 Village Green. Just had a couple information-only questions. I heard that the, the length of the buildings, building off on the site would, might be five years. So I'm just wondering, like, a couple of questions. Where do the, where does the building start with, with regards to the road? Do we start at the beginning of the road and work our way back? Or does it start at the end of the road and come back?
We would start right from Village Green and go all the way to the end, probably do it all in one shot.
Oh, okay, so we'll, so for that period of five years, are you building houses?
Yes.
Entire time?
Yeah.
Okay. And then...
We, we hope it's not five years, but...
I gotcha, right. So it depends on how well they sell, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
And five years was, was an end, so the permit expires in five years.
Okay, so just wondering how, how long, you know?
Based on similar types of projects and market absorption, you know, we see, you know, anywhere like 12 to 15 units a year. So the affordable ones sometimes don't go as quickly as you'd like to see them go.
Okay.
So, you know, but that's, if you took 40 divided by 12 or 15, you're looking at, you know, three years, four years of residential construction.
So from our standpoint, we're, we'll see the, the building happening at the beginning of the road and then working its way back? Is that right?
We'll put the whole road in, but it, it may not go, you know, like lot one, two, three, four, in that order. You might do one, two, and do five and six, and then come back and do three and four or something. I mean, some customer coming in will have their preference on which lot they may wanna take.
Okay, okay, I gotcha. And then, so the other question I had, I do have the same concern about the children in the neighborhood and, and the traffic. And it seemed like, you know, there's gonna be certain clearing going on, I think I heard six to 12 months or so.
The land clearing probably wouldn't take much more than a couple of weeks.
Is that where the big trucks are?
You, you, I mean, you're gonna have trucks, I'm not gonna lie to you, right through construction, you're gonna have lumber trucks, you're gonna have concrete trucks, you're gonna have...
Okay.
You know, you're gonna have different trucking.
Be pouring the foundation with concrete trucks coming in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, you might have vans, pickup trucks and things and everything. You're gonna have some increased traffic with that. I'm just telling you the truth.
Yeah, that's fine. No, that's, that's good. I think that's all I had. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
We actually dealt with the landscaping in section G2 as well, so I, I think I need to go back and merge or marry all these things together. All right, anything else?
John?
He has a big smile.
Well, I would just add that, you know, if the board was so inclined, we're comfortable if the board was to close the hearing subject to final, final adjustments to the language, authorize in the chair and the board to sign.
Do you have a, I mean, we have a few little belts and suspenders, but I don't see, what's your thoughts on this?
Are there still some key DPW input?
I don't know. I think there's another draft to be done, so it's up to you guys if you wanna see it all together in a meeting. You don't have to have a hearing. You could close the hearing tonight and then have a deliberation session to look at the last changes.
I'd rather keep it open. Before a meeting.
If we close and deliberate and need to change something, what do you do?
No, we can...
You can change it.
We can still change something. We just, we just don't have public input.
Yeah, closing the hearing means you can't take any more testimony from folks. And you technically have 40 days from the close of the hearing to make the final decision, so...
Was there anything outstanding we needed either from DPW or...
DPW, DPW were just clarifying the, the mailing versus...
That's what I was getting shot about, is the input from the DPW. Is that gonna be considered testimony outside of the hearing process?
It's just clarification.
No, it's just clarification.
He's already testified, so we're just clarifying what he meant.
Okay.
I mean, the, the, it's the 24th, right? I mean, it would be the next time, because we can't do the 15th, right?
24th.
Yeah. I mean, we'd be looking, looking at the changes on the 24th, closing the public hearing, and then voting. Or you could close the public hearing. You would like, you would like the board to see a draft one more time before we take a vote. Is that your inclination?
I think that would be the, the more prudent course.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be a hearing. It could be a meeting.
Right, so we could close the public hearing. Is there any benefit to closing the public hearing at this point, as opposed to waiting till next time?
No, unless they're demanding it. I mean, it's, it's their, it's their prerogative because we, we're beyond the 180 days.
Right.
Well, I guess the other, the other question is, could the board close the hearing as, subject to a final documentation? Would, I mean, would the board even have to deliberate at a meeting if they're just reviewing the final wording of the decision after the hearing's closed? I mean, would you have to wait till the next meeting to vote, or could they just, could the board just simply vote, subject to review of the final language that's contemplated this evening?
I'd rather see everything done.
Again, I think the most prudent course would have a revised draft. I mean, there were a few open issues here, including the performance security with the bonding and...
So, so it would be continued to the 24th, basically, the hearing would be open. We, we probably don't need Randy here, consultants, or Sean, really.
I don't think we, I think we just need you and John and...
And, and just basically take a look at everything, close the hearing and vote on it.
Vote on it, he does.
Yeah, I don't think there's a big difference one way or another.
You don't have a problem with that?
No. Yeah, that's, as long as we can do that, that's, that's fine.
Okay. Right. Any other comments, Sean? Dan? Okay. Could I have a motion to continue the public hearing for the, for the enclave till April 24th at seven o'clock at room 124?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Got a lot accomplished. Could I have a motion to close the EBA meeting at 10:10 PM on the April 3rd at room 124?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
This is next meeting, right?
Yeah.
It's the next meeting.
Yeah.